Ladies and gentlemen, we will call the April 11th meeting of the Caroline County Board of Supervisors to order. Let the record state that all board members are present. Representing the Madison District is Mr. Forehand. Representing Western Carolina, Mr. Black. Representing Bowling Green, Mr. Sealy. Representing Port Royal is Mrs. Long. Representing Reedy Church is Mr. Underwood. And I'm Floyd Thomas, representing Manapana. We will begin our meeting as we do always with an invocation. Mrs. Long is going to grace us with an opening prayer. If you'll please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for the beauty of spring. We give thanks for this country. We give thanks for all your many wonderful blessings. We pray, dear Heavenly Father, for your guidance in our lives tonight and every day. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. If you please join with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty, we will begin with opening board comments. Mr. Forehand, do you have any?
I have none tonight, sir.
Mr. Black?
Yes, I just have a few. First of all, I'd like to send condolences to the Broadus family on their tragic loss. So, and then the other thing, just a real quick on, and I don't know if Mr. Sheble is here or not.
He's not.
Mr. Sheble is not here, okay. We do still continue, and I think he started to put out there on social media. We do still plan to have the massive try to clean up Caroline Day on Saturday, May 5th. Trash is definitely a huge problem along the roadways here in Caroline, so anyone that could come out and volunteer. We're looking for any and every road. I do think that the schools have agreed to kind of participate in that as well. So, that is, that is about, oh, one last thing. Mr. Parton, did we, I had asked for a maintenance schedule for our county vehicles. Have we, do we have that?
Mr. Black, we've asked the Department of Public Works and Utilities to begin keeping records. I believe Fire and Rescue already does.
Okay.
I would assume the Sheriff's Office does as well. Those are our heavy users, but we can ask everyone to begin doing.
Do you mind just sending that as far as when they send you the schedule, as far as sending out how they, how they do, like when they send their cars in for repairs for whatever, when it hits so many miles? I appreciate, thank you. That's all, Mr. Thomas, thank you.
Mrs. Sealy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those that haven't seen it on social media, Bowling Green has dedicated a life, a love sign in front of Town Hall, and it cre, it has a number of history pictures related to Bowling Green in Caroline County. I just encourage everybody to drive by, take a look and see how many you can identify. I too would like to offer my condolences. I was at the funeral this morning for Mike Broadus, County Extension Agent. Super individual, always willing to help, worked, worked a lot in 4H. Did a lot for the ag community in Caroline, and he will sorely miss, so my condolences to the family. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Sealy. Ms. Long?
Well, I think everyone who reached out to Broadus' family, it's, it is a loss, and he will be missed. But every loved one that we lose, especially unexpectedly, we need to keep the families close to us. And other than that, I hope everyone had a wonderful weekend. It was a beautiful one for us. I hope you enjoyed it, and now we're going to settle down and get ready for budget season.
Thank you, Ms. Long, Mr. Underwood. No comments at this time, Mr. Chairman? Thank you, sir. Again, extend our sympathies to the Broadus family, who is, I think, most people know now. He passed away quite unexpectedly last week. The Habitat for Humanity is having a groundbreaking, I think most of you may have heard, that they got a grant to build 20 new houses for lower-income individuals, and that's going to be on the 21st of April in the town of Bowling Green at Travis Street and East Broadus. It's 12 o'clock. I think I'll send it to you exactly. I think it's 12. Don't, don't hold me to that. And then again, another, I think at our last meeting, we talked about the terrible shooting in Nashville. And unfortunately, again, this week, we're talking about a terrible shooting in Louisville. Mr. Forehand made some, some very good comments about that at our last meeting. And one of the things that he said was, we need to talk about how to fix this without being argumentative amongst ourselves. So, I'm going to take him up on that, and somehow, I think on a local level, we're at least going to talk about it because I think the safety of children going to school is paramount. And the safety of people just going about their regular daily business, going to the bank, going to the grocery store is something we've got to address, and I think it begins with all of us, but as leadership, we need to take the lead and at least say that we can talk about it without having a fight and try to come with some common sense solution. So, those are my comments, and we will move on to any amendments for the agenda that board members may have at this time. Any discussion of amendments? Hearing none, we're going to move forward with the agenda as is. Our first agenda item is presentations. And at this time, we're going to have the recognition of the Commonwealth Attorney, Mr. John Mahoney, for his service to Caroline County upon the announcement of his retirement. And Mr. Mahoney, I believe this is at least his second time he's retired because he retired from the Marine Corps a few years ago. So, this is the resolution as it reads, "A Resolution of Appreciation for John L. Mahoney for his service to Caroline County upon the occasion of his, his retirement. Whereas, following his enlistment in the United States Marine Corps and advancement to the rank of major, Mr. John L. Mahoney became the Commonwealth Attorney for Caroline County on January 1st, 2016, and was re-elected without opposition to a second term in office in November 2019. And whereas during his tenure, Mr. Mahoney has performed his duties as Commonwealth Attorney admirably and with distinction and displayed the traits of leadership, professionalism, and integrity in the pursuit of justice. And whereas, under his command, the Commonwealth Attorney's Office has continuously evolved to meet new challenges and provide exceptional service to the citizens of Caroline County as an essential component of the criminal justice system. And whereas, in addition to his service as Commonwealth Attorney, Mr. Mahoney has committed his time and energy toward the betterment of Caroline County as a long-term member and past year of the Board of Directors of the Caroline County Habitat for Humanity, Service to the Humane Society, Sparta, Rurten Club, and helping to build ramps for handicapped citizens. And whereas Mr. Mahoney recently announced that he will retire as Commonwealth Attorney for Caroline County on May 1st, 2023, now therefore be it resolved that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors hereby commends and extends its deep appreciation to John L. Mahoney for seven-plus years of exemplary service to the citizens of Caroline County and extends its very best wishes for a long, happy, and healthy retirement. Adopted this 11th day, 2023, and signed by the Clerk of the Court and Chair of the Board." Mr. Mahoney, if you would like to make some statement first, and then come up, and we'll present this to you.
Thank you. You know, I, I gotta tell you, I'm sad to be retiring. I had expected to do at least one more term, and God willing, beyond that. But I never suspected when I took office in 2020 that my health would go far south in a serious way. All related to Camp June Water. I, I have really enjoyed working with Caroline County. I appreciate the support I got from this board throughout my tenure. Every time I came before the board for something, I left happy. So, that's good, and it's just a wonderful group of people that work in Caroline County and the citizens as well. You know, I love the Marine Corps. I never thought I could have a job that was anything close to that, but I found it here in Caroline County. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
In the time, all the Attorney's Office in good hands with Benjamin. Okay. Thank you. All right, again, thank you, Mr. Mahoney, for your service in the Marine Corps and the Caroline. Mr. Height, if you will just stand and wave, Mr. Mahoney has requested that you be appointed as a Commonwealth Attorney upon his retirement. So, we just wanted you to wave and face the crowd and the TV cameras. Alrighty, our next agenda item is, as most of you know, okay, we were having problems with the lights, so that's not anything extra. Just the lights. But as we know, April is Earth Day month, and the Sierra Club has asked to make a presentation to the county for Earth Day and for some other things. So, at this point in time, we will ask Mr. Chandler Priggin if he will come up and make the presentation with additional members of Earth Day, of Sierra Club supporting.
Oh, outstanding. Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. My name is Chandler Priggin. I am a citizen of the Madison District, and I'm here today representing the Sierra Club Rappahannock Group. And I am joined today by members of that group, as well as the National Sierra Club, and with members of the Caroline community that are concerned with the issue we want to bring up today, which is building a climate action plan in Caroline County. But first, a little bit about Rappahannock Group Sierra Club. We are a local extension of the National Sierra Club. The general mission is just to explore, enjoy, and protect the whiteboard, Westmoreland, as well as Culpeper and parts of Orange County. Some of the discussion points we want to hit on, just so we're all on the same page, is what is climate change? Why is it important? How do we know climate change actually exists? How does or will climate change affect Caroline County directly, and what can we do about it?
Oh, it's not on? We, we have monitors here, and, and his monitor's not working, but we'll just view it up here.
Fair enough. Sounds good.
So, go ahead.
All right. So, what is climate change? It's the rapid increase of Earth's average surface temperature, both land and water, since the beginning of the Industrial Revolution, due to excessive and increasing greenhouse gas emissions, as well as land, water, and energy use. So, basically, it's getting hotter everywhere, and it's creating a lot of other problems, or to use a very poor example, a snowball effect of other issues. Which is exactly why knowing about climate change is important. I'm not going to go through this whole thing. I'll let you all read through that. But you can see, rising temperatures all over lead to a myriad of issues. These are just a few examples. Drier land, a hotter, more acidic ocean, more intensive evaporation, melting sea and mountain ice. These can lead to issues that primarily will lead to things like biodiversity loss, stronger storms that last longer and happen more frequently, as well as less usable and livable land, food shortages, and drinkable and usable water shortages. So, how do we know that it actually exists? It's through periodic reports provided by a group called the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. This is through the United Nations. This is their specific body for assessing the science related to climate change. They've been around since 1988, and they're composed of 195 member countries. These assessments are completed every six to seven years, consisting of multiple reports evaluating thousands of scientific papers, assessing the science, the impact, the risks, how, how we can adapt and mitigate the effects of climate change. This most recent assessment was completed on March 20th of this year with the release of the synthesis report, which is basically a summary of all the reports from the most recent assessment period. And I want to point out just a few highlights from that. The first is that human activities principally through emissions of greenhouse gases have unequivocally caused global warming, with global surface temperature reaching 1.1 degrees Celsius above pre-industrial levels in 2011 to 2020. Another highlight is that all global model pathways that limit warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius or 2 degrees Celsius involve rapid and deep, and in most cases, immediate greenhouse gas emission reductions in all sectors this decade. So, seven years left. And you may be asking, well, why is 1.5 degrees Celsius or 2 degrees Celsius so important? Because these numbers were agreed upon to stay under by the United Nations in 2015 through the Paris Climate Accords. The reason we want to avoid these numbers is because we will start hitting tipping points that we can no longer roll back from. A couple of examples is, we will not be able to stop all of the sea ice from melting once we hit some of these thresholds. Another one is that we will no longer be able to stop all of the coral reefs from dying off. So, it's just an example why it's important. The last one is, rapid and far-reaching transitions across all sectors and systems are necessary to achieve deep and sustained emissions reductions to secure a livable and sustainable future for everyone. So, again, this is not just affecting one thing. This is everything. This is how we run our county. This is how we run our businesses, all the way down to how we run our everyday lives. And I just want to point out here, these are things that are agreed upon. You can see it on the, on the slide. These are things that are agreed upon with high confidence by 195 countries that typically can't agree on anything. So, how will climate change affect Caroline directly? In a lot of the same ways we've talked about. We're going to have excessively higher temperatures, reduced crop yields, water quality and supply issues, stronger storms closer inland, and that lasts longer, which is going to cause a heavier economic impact. Biodiversity loss and migration from the east, south, and west. And I'll give you a few examples. Miami, it's known, is sinking, and sea level rises, working to take more away. New Orleans is sinking, and sea level rises, working on that. Closer to home, Hampton Roads is sinking, and it has been for a while now. The west, you go, well, they'll just move out west. Are they? They're suffering from further, like longer drought seasons, more fires. A lot of that is migration coming north and east. So, what can we do about it? We can mitigate. Some examples of how we can mitigate? We can look at investing in solar and wind energy more. And I know the last thing the board wants to hear is about solar energy, after all the things y'all have been dealing with. But I'm not saying this is not an all- But I'm not saying this is not an all-out cry to say, you must do every solar job. If it's solar, it's good for the environment, take it. I'm not about that at all, and neither is Sierra Club. We want to be pragmatic, but we want to also be aware of taking more calculated risks. I heard a lot of people in this county say they were opposed to solar because it took away too much land, and why aren't we looking at putting it on top of existing infrastructure? I agree with that 100%. But are we looking at those kind of things? Do you want to be encouraging electric and alternative modes of transportation, public, bikes, walking? As this county grows, are we encouraging more biking? Are we building things closer to each other? So we're encouraging biking, public transportation, and walking. Regenerative forest cross, grassland management practices, and then just in our general lifestyles, reducing our waste, refusing things like plastic, repairing, reusing, recycling. We can also adapt. We can do things like climate, climate risk assessments and update our emergency planning as needed. We can do things like urban greening. Richmond is dealing with this now. They have a lot of heat islands within the city, because you're dealing with places that have no greenery. Just doing something as simple as building trees within your cityscape makes a huge difference. Infrastructure maintenance and improvement, and water conservation and reuse practices. Did you know that right now, in Hampton Roads, there is a program called SWIFT that they are using? Once water is treated at the wastewater facility, it is sent to the SWIFT program, and it is treated further to turn it into drinkable water, and it is being used to refill the Potomac Aquifer. So with all these things in mind, it's important, I think, to put these into a climate action plan. But you have to ask why. It allows us to make a statement. It allows us to say, yes, we believe that climate change is coming, and we believe we need to plan for it to protect this county. It prioritizes the safety and sustainability of our locality and citizens by developing a lens and a filter through which most decisions can be viewed. It encourages locality-wide collaboration, as we will need multiple and differing viewpoints in order to develop the most effective plan. And it establishes a continuing process that can be updated and changed as new data becomes available through future administrations. And just to wrap up here, these are a few examples of climate action plans that are going on around the state. The city of Norfolk, Harrisonburg, the town of Blacksburg, go Hokies. There we go, got some fans. The city of Charlottesville, Alamo, we're talking about collaboration. The city of Charlottesville, Alamo County, and the University of Virginia actually collaborated together to build their climate action plans. You see a little further north, Fairfax and City of Alexandria. And then south of us, Henrico County, the city of Richmond, and even Fredericksburg a little above us is developing their own. You see all these examples, and I want to point out that no climate action plan is the same. They're all different, but we have a lot of good templates to work from and to build from. It takes a lot of perspectives to do this. And I also think it's kind of cool that you look and you see, there's some climate action below us and some climate action above us, but within this area in between, there's not a lot. I think it's kind of neat that we can be a spark to fill that gap in climate action between Richmond and DC. Spotsy, Stafford, Westmoreland, Hanover, none of them have climate action plans at this time. So it works even further as far as a collaborative effort. But at that time, that is it. That is my email at the top. The email below is to the Rappahannock Group Sierra Club. If anybody here, or even watching on YouTube, wants a copy of my presentation to be able to go through the links, please shoot me an email. I'd be more than happy to talk with you. But I'll take questions at this time. And thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, sir, and the members of the Sierra Club. Mr. Cully or Mr. Parton, we have a copy of the presentation. If you could put that on our county website to make sure that folks have access to it, that can get to the website. That's at least a bonus. Any questions, Mr. Forehand?
Nope.
Mr. Black?
Yeah, I just have, I actually have a one question and then a statement. Why did, like, it used to be years ago it was global warming, now it's global climate change. And the temperatures, the temperatures are rising, why don't they just stick with the global warming?
People were using global warming to say, to counteract the fact that climate change is creating extremes on both sides. Heavier precipitation is creating, can create more extreme actual snow events as well. When people were saying global warming, they were going, oh, well, if it's getting so warm, I think everybody remembers the congressman that walked in and goes, if it's, if global warming is true, how come I'm holding a snowball in my hand? And as people got, you know, people kind of got frustrated with that, and they said, it's climate, it's just climate change. There's more than just the warming to it. The warming is, again, like we talked about, it's creating all the cascading effects.
Okay. And then the second question or kind of a statement I have is, I used to serve on the Rappahannock River Basin Commission, because I'm kind of an avid fisherman, and we used to get, I, I left that commission because of frustration, because we used to do modeling. We used to show models. This is the model nitrogen phosphorus sediment, and it was always, would get a new model. And it was just, I'd never felt like we were doing anything. I felt like we were getting a lot of information, but I never felt like we were doing anything. And I'll just give you an example, like, a couple of weeks ago, I was the shadow running up the Rappahannock, and I was out there fishing, and a shoe just goes floating by me in the river, you know, and, and a plastic bag. And I understand all this is really important, but it's something that I feel like we, we concentrate on the nitrogen phosphorus sediment and stuff in the air, but sometimes there's basic things. We, we have problems in Caroline with trash along the road, and then getting into the streams and so forth. And no one wants those forever materials getting in. And I just think that's something that we can concentrate on. That's something that I can actually see and do. So I don't know if the Sierra Club here locally is saying, hey, look, you know, we need trash pickups, we need to get this stuff out of the streams. But it was just kind of frustrating to me that we were talking about models, but then you go fishing, and then you're seeing, you're seeing like common sense stuff that we can actually take action on, go floating by, and no one's, no one's talking about it.
Oh, I agree. And we, and I agree, we, I've had issues with that now, because it feels like with, it feels like with climate, everything is a rabbit hole. There's no issue that's just, and that's why honestly, I signed up to do Adopt a Highway not too long ago, because I said, I'm getting buried in all of this information. Everything's a rabbit hole. Nothing can be simple. I just talked to somebody about data centers the other day, and, which led to an email that was good grief, at least four pages long, which has now led to an hour-long meeting I've got on Thursday.
So you're saying you're doing an Adopt a Highway?
Yes, I am. I'm trying. I know.
Sweet.
But that's what we, but yeah, but that's what, and that's what the action plan is, is part of. And you notice climate, when it says climate action, that's what we mean. We want to have something that gives us a base, a base to work off of. But we want to be out there doing things. This is not just about sitting discussing. I get frustrated with that.
We have an out-in.
Mr. Johnson, would you just step closer to the mic to make sure we can hear you?
Okay. Yeah, we have an out-in member that goes out just about every month, and he sends us email as to where we are going that month. And we go and pick up, you know, trash, you know, for miles. And, you know, we kind of have a feedback from the people that go with us. That's a good thing. So this is a monthly thing that he does. And if I'm right, voila, sometimes twice a month, you know. And, and we are very active as the Rappahannock Group Sierra Club.
Mr. Sealy?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman. This is long.
Got your email right here.
Mr. Underwood?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we want to thank you for coming. We do appreciate it, and we understand it is a serious concern. So anything you can do to, to help us would be great. I noticed there were no rural counties on that list that you went through, or I'll say, none as rural as us.
Yes.
So the reality is, we have a chance to, to at least be, be leaders in this particular thought process. So thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Take good work.
Thank you. Our, our next presentation or report will be the fiscal year 2022, 2023 Second Quarter Budget Report, which will be handled by Ms. Tamika Smith, the County Finance Director. And again, the numbers Ms. Smith is going to present to us are basically the first half of the 23 fiscal year. There, there are certain constraints that, that Ms. Smith has to work with. You know, the county has basically three different financial systems. One, the county uses, an older system, the treasurer uses, that we're pulling data from and then importing into our new system. And then, of course, the schools have their own system. So we know exactly what our expenditures are. We get the revenue report from the treasurer, and those are being posted a little slower than normal due to some, some issues they're having there. But on that note, Ms. Smith, if you're ready?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman Thomas and members of the Board. Tonight, I will provide a fiscal year 23 Second Quarter Financial Status Report for the county. This report is unaudited, as Chairman Thomas stated, and is on a modified accrual basis, except for the utilities fund, which is on a full accrual basis. This more accurately reflects revenues and expenditures as they would be shown in our annual comprehensive financial report. The summaries provided in the board package show that 45.7% of the budgeted revenues for the major funds have been already collected as of December of 2022, and 41.4% of budgeted expenditures have already been spent. The major funds include the general fund, all school funds, debt revenue fund, social services fund, children's services fund, which is CSA, Caroline Utilities Fund, and the Don Wastewater Fund. So those will be the funds that I will concentrate on tonight. For the general fund, for the quarter ending December 31st, 2022, general fund revenues collected were $30,987,120, or 31 million, or 50.3% of the budget estimates. Property tax collections were up 7.5% higher than they were second quarter of last year. That's $1.6 million. Local sale taxes collected are 5.9% higher than they were at this time last year. Overall, our general fund expenditures are 39.5% of the estimated budget, with expenditures of $24,324,251. At the second quarter of the fiscal year, the unadjusted change in the general fund balance would be a positive $6,662,868 if we were to end the fiscal year currently. Total revenues posted for Caroline County Public Schools are at 40.2% of the budget, while the total expenditures were at 37.5%. School revenues exceeded the expenditures by $1,909,707. And this would be for all of the school funds. For social services, revenues are at 42, 43.2% of budget, and the expenditures are at 47% of the budget. For the Children's Services Act, revenues were at 42% of the budget and expenditures at 34.4% of the budget. The Debt Retirement Fund has revenues of $1,759,640. This is where we have the Mills Tax, Communications, Consumer Utility Tax. Typically, there would be some transfers that are made, and they are typically made at the semi, semi-annually by the treasurer's office, but those have not been made yet, so those will be made shortly. Of those revenues, 908,458 are Mills Taxes that have been collected, which represents a 13.6% increase over last year and 74% of the total budget. Debt service payments have been made in the amount of $4,924,644, and that represents 54.5% of the budget. For the Caroline Utility Fund, the operating revenues were 66.6% of the budget, with $2,2730 collected. Availability fees are at 49.4% of the budget, or $1,352,255. The operating expenses for Caroline Utility Funds were 40.6% of the budget. And utility fund debt service payments have been made, equating to 59% of the budget. The operating revenues of $2,2730 exceeded the operating expenses of $1,762,416 to generate net operation income of $240,315. Caroline Utility Fund continues to generate sufficient income to cover the operating expenses. However, it still will need assistance for the debt service payments. The Don Wastewater Fund has operating revenues at 58.1% of the budget. However, the operating expenses are 134.7% of the budget. The total revenues of $46,691 compared to the total expenditures of $192,971 result in a second quarter loss of $146,280. In conclusion, during the fiscal year, the fiscal quarter ending December 31st, 2022, Caroline County's collection of revenue for the major funds for mid-year activities continue to exceed expenditures for the same timeframe. During fiscal year 2022, $1,278,311 was the adopted budgets transfer from undesignated reserve fund balance. However, at this time, we do not anticipate using debt. Now, I would like to provide the January 2023 Budget Status Report for the school system at the request of Chairman Thomas. Per the January 2023 Budget Status Report that was provided by the schools, of the fiscal year 2023, total school appropriations of $68,827,648.48% of revenue, or $33,97,550, has been collected. And 44.7% of expenditure budget, or $30,746,967, has been spent. At this point last January, revenues were $2,818,730 less, and expenditures are currently up $3,816,227. The current fiscal year total schools budget is up $5,817,426 above last year's budget. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Board members have questions of Ms. Smith? I'll start the other side. Mr. Underwood?
Ms. Smith, um, total, total debt for the utilities is how much? Or debt service, excuse me?
Total budgeted debt service for utilities is $3,039,231.
Is the new service to Lady Smith included in that debt service number?
No, sir.
What's that number for the?
Um, it's going to be about $600,000 for the, are you talking about the 20 million that we borrow?
Correct.
Yes, it's, it will be about $600,000.
So that's an additional $600,000 to the 20, to service the 20 million?
Yes, however, there would be, um, there are some that are going down slightly. So fiscal year 24 proposed number is $3,485,353, so an increase of $446,000.
Okay, $3,400,000, I got 500. Is it 390, 3390, and it's 3.4?
Yes, sir. 3485.
Total county debt? What's the total county debt for as, as we, we're here this evening?
County and school?
Yes.
$9,39,000 off the top of my head. $9,31,340.
That's our total debt service, correct?
Yes.
That's, that's the, that's debt service.
Exclusive of utilities.
That's right. That's the payment, not our debt, not our debt. Because that's our debt service. I wanted to know the.
The debt service payment.
Right, but I wanted to know the total debt, county total debt.
I will have to get that. I will have to get that for you.
Okay. No guesstimation.
If I had to guess, it's about a hundred and twenty-seven million, but please don't hold me to that.
I won't. You can have that for me at the next meeting. I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And that would be less utility debt, Ms. Smith?
Um, that would be all.
Total.
That would be inclusive of utility.
Okay.
That sounds like it's in the ballpark, but I would trust her.
I know it was a hundred plus before we borrowed the twenty-four. All right. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Yes, sir.
The twenty-something you referenced, we don't have any payment this fiscal year.
Only interest.
Right. We just pay the interest. So then we'll make the other payments start as long, as long as no questions, Mr. Sealy, Mr. Black?
Yeah, I, I have, um, just on the last paragraph, as the, of the first page, uh, it said if the, basically if the fiscal year, if we were to end today, we would be in a positive as the county by six point six million. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So we would have a surplus of six point six million?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next thing is you read some numbers. I had asked for some information regarding, um, accounting budget and so forth, and I think all the supervisors got a copy of that. You read some information dealing with the schools and I didn't seem to get a copy of that. I think Mr. Tommy said Mr. Thomas had asked for that uh, in regards to the school, uh, budget, uh, you were reading it off. Um, do you, what was that number again about expenditures of the schools? Cause I don't, I don't have a copy of that at my desk and, um, yeah, I like to look over that stuff beforehand.
That was a, that, that was provided to us at the joint meeting.
Okay.
Uh, remember the joint meeting, I, I asked if the schools would like to make a presentation and they said, we'll give, we'll give you the information and, and that was the last we had that corresponds with this. That is right, Dr. Calvert, right?
Pam, Pam.
Ms. Hall, Ms. Hall does have a copy of that if you'd like.
Okay. Well, that helps. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Now, since you did mention that, we had a problem with board docs today. Uh, Ms. Smith wasn't able to find any information on board docs that's go around, so I guess she'll get in touch with you guys to make sure it works next time. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Four, oh, Mr. Black, were you?
Yeah, I just, maybe they can ask this, but I mean, that's why I like to, uh, as far as the expenditures, uh, I guess the expenditures are up close to four million or five million. Is there, maybe Dr. Calverick or someone from the schools can, can, I don't know if that's COVID money or?
You were talking about their budget increase to five million?
Yeah, the, what, what, what is the, what's the reason the expenditures are up by the five million?
Year-on-year.
I do appreciate you asking that question as I do believe that stating that we have five million dollars worth of additional funds without context can be misleading to the public. So thank you so much for affording us the opportunity to clarify. Of the five million dollars, two million is the one-time construction funds that are being required um, to carry over into the FY twenty-four, so that obviously accounts for the two million. The three million is the increase in state funds, which typically occurs in the first year of the biennium, of which we, because we were level funded this year, used that money to create the seven percent salary increase along with making internal changes to our compensation and our line items so that we can accommodate all of our employees, all seven hundred versus just the standards of quality. And I will let, um, Mrs. Stevens address any other additional mandates that are embedded within that three million.
I think that's, that's, that's good, uh, Mr. Black.
That's, that's, I mean, a lot of its mandate, yes, that's fine. That's good. Thank you.
Mr. Forehand?
Ms. Smith, the, um, the, the Dawn Wastewater expenditures are, were at a hundred and thirty-four percent at the, at the half-year mark. Do you have any idea what, what happened?
Um, I do not.
Okay.
I will have to look, um, through if we're missing some revenue pieces.
Right.
Um, or if where we are. So I will, I will check on that and give out.
Well, it might be something that Mr. Shebel could answer. Um, you know, we, the show must go on with systems like that regardless of the cost, but, um, just that gets your attention at the six-month mark. We're at a hundred and thirty-four percent. So, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, just a couple, uh, Ms. Smith, you mentioned that we got nine hundred and eight thousand dollars in Mills Tax.
Yes, sir.
And Mills Tax, Mr. Colley, is dedicated to school debt, correct?
It is a revenue in the debt retirement fund. So I, it, it, you could say it is. It's, it's just all revenue and then what we transfer into the debt retirement fund makes up the debt retirement of schools and county debt.
And school debt is more than nine hundred thousand, so, but, but when the referendum passed, part of the direction was that school debt.
So it's a revenue in that fund and the school, the debt service payments are way more than what we collect in Mills Tax.
Okay. We just want to make sure that we all understand the more you eat out, the more money goes to school debt. So that's a, that's a great thing. Uh, the other thing that, that we mentioned, I think Dr. Calverick mentioned was the additional five million dollars you got from last year's budget to this year's budget. Two million of that you said was dedicated for school construction projects. And then you said the three million additional funds you got from the state were for SOQ personnel? That was pure?
Well, we do not have the line item breakdown this evening to give you a fully, um, robust response. The money that was received from the state, there are a number of parameters associated with it. Of course, we have mandates that we must meet. We also then receive a wide array of at-risk add-on funding and that money can be used in a variety of ways. Specifically, they ask for you to utilize that to, um, outfit the division with additional, um, employee positions that will help that at-risk population.
Nursery workers and things like that.
It can be almost any face-to-face employee with students.
Okay.
And so the other option is that you can use that for compensation as a retention effort. So again, not to beat a dead horse, but because we received no new funds, we opted to utilize all of those state monies to give a seven percent salary increase to staff, knowing that our regional comparators were meeting or exceeding that percentage.
Do you remember in our joint meeting where we both agreed to, to use our words differently? Um, when you say you, the budget did increase, the school budget did increase?
Absolutely.
But the local funding did not.
That is correct.
Okay. And that's, that's one thing. It's, it's just a matter of fact to make sure we understand the budget did increase for the schools. So that's something that was a positive and we agree on that.
Yes.
Now, while you're here, the budgets that are still being worked on in Richmond include, I think the low end was two point five million dollars for standard equality teachers?
That is not accurate and so I'll have to ask Mrs. Stevens, our chief operations officer, to come forward.
Well, what is accurate, Ms. Stevens?
Good afternoon. As presented in our budget to the Board of Supervisors, the increase in state funding based on the state budget Governor proposed was three hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and seventy dollars of net new money of one point five million of money carried over from the construction grant funding. So three hundred and fifty-three, six seventy is our net increase.
We're just talking about the teacher raises that were in the proposed budgets.
Is the increase in the, in the raises is part of that net funding of three hundred and fifty-three. We can't get any additional more than three hundred fifty-three thousand dollars.
I thought it was something like two million for standard equality raises that was being proposed. Uh, are, are you saying it wasn't passed or?
For point of clarification, are you?
Next year's budget.
I understand that, yes, sir. Are you referencing what the General Assembly, the House and the Senate outlined?
Yes.
And so you are looking for those total amounts. Mrs. Stevens, is that something you have accessible this evening? We are not prepared to speak to this level of detail tonight and
Okay.
if that is something that you would like, then we need to schedule a joint board meeting so we can have further dialogue.
Well, you can come back in July when we do the third quarter report and do the same thing.
We are happy to have FaceTime with you, but we also invite you to attend our board meetings where we give monthly reports on our fiscal status as well.
Ladies and, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, if, if you will please refrain from, from applauding, I will give you the opportunity to applaud when we're totally done. Ms. Stevens?
The Governor proposed one point nine seven eight five one eight in compensation supplement with a match of one point one nine two oh nine million dollars.
So that's three, that's three million from the Governor's proposed budget, right?
That is in addition over top of the prior year. It's year-over-year.
Okay.
The net funding increase for the prior year was eight sixty-nine, so the difference is of one point one million dollars. However, there are reductions in the Governor's proposed budget, therefore we are at a three hundred and fifty-three net increase over the prior year.
Okay. Thank you very much. And, oh, oh, before you go, that was for just standard equality teachers, right?
Standard of quality teachers support administration.
Standard of quality that it's listed as SOQ and says this is what it is, whether they're teachers or whatever. And as you, uh, support staff and, and as you've said in our joint meetings, instead of just giving a raise to the standard of quality personnel, you spread that entire raise across the entire staff.
We believe that all seven hundred employees help the wheels on the bus continue to turn each and every day and therefore they are all worthy of a raise.
And, and I perfectly agree with what you're saying. It's just a matter of saying that the state, again, and this is a point of agreement, because we want to make sure we agree on this particular point. The state just gives us money for standard equality.
That is correct.
They leave out everybody else.
That is a minimum employment requirement, absolutely. And no division operates at the SOQ standard.
So, so when we, when we get a increase, an increase from the state and there's a county match that's required from that, we put those both in, but those are only according to the state for standard equality people.
That is correct and you have provided matches to the standard of quality, but I think we have shared the two thousand eighteen and now the two thousand twenty-two salary study data, which indicates we are sixteen out of seventeenth for our regional comparators and so no longer reaching the floor versus the ceiling is acceptable. We will continue to widen that gap if we do not go above and beyond that.
I'm, I'm trying to get you to agree with me that the state should do more because they're just highlighting standard equality people, which means that the raises are less when they're spread out.
Yes, and yes, that the local government also, when you have an increasing local composite index, which indicates your ability to pay is higher and you hear that you have six million dollars of general fund increase, we need to have further conversation about compensation.
And we're definitely willing to have that, but unfortunately, the fiscal year didn't end December thirty-first, so there, there are some things that will cause that six million dollar number to be significantly less.
As is our budget vulnerable in those same ways.
And, and as I told some folks out there, we're gonna try to do the best we can for you, so.
Well, we will certainly hope you do that.
We do agree the state should do more, right?
I do agree and absolutely would welcome you to lobby with us when we go down to the legislative advocacy opportunities in Richmond.
Okay. Thank you. So, so there is some consensus. We at least think the state should do more. Ms. Smith, I think that was it for questions and, and, uh, if there's, not yet, not yet, not yet, not yet. Um, I think that was it for questions. So thank, thank you very much for that great report. We do appreciate it. All right. Now, the rules of the, the Board of Supervisors meeting is there should be no applause. There should be no booing. So we keep it fair. But what I'm gonna do for you guys is I'm gonna suspend the rules for one time and one time only. Okay? When we get to the public hearing, I'm not gonna allow applause and I'm not gonna allow booing. But if you would all like to applaud right now for the school system, go right ahead. All right. Thank you again, ladies and gentlemen. Um, as you would say in school, in your classroom, we won't do that again, will we? My sister was a teacher for forty-some years, so some of that rubbed off on her little brother. All right. That takes care of our presentations for this evening. The next thing is the consent agenda. Is there anything board members would like to have, uh, removed or discussed in the consent agenda? Hearing no questions or anything, we'll take a motion.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could I pull item C?
Item C is the appropriation for sheriff vehicles?
Yes.
Uh, we can discuss that? Anything else? Mr. Colley, would you give us a little bit more of an explanation on supplemental appropriation for capital improvements for sheriff vehicles equipment?
I know I can't find this, see, what, what'd you ask for?
It's nineteen thousand six hundred forty-six dollars.
We, we had some cars that were, uh, totaled and we received insurance funds on those, but it wasn't enough with the cost of new vehicles to purchase the cars and then replace the equipment in those. And so this is the leftover amount. That's what's in the memo that's on the back of the staff memo from the sheriff's office.
You have that in the stand? Yeah. Can you, do you have any idea how much money we received from insurance? And what the, what the differential is?
Twenty-one thousand received from insurance. Um, remember some of the cars, if they got any age on them at all, they will give you hardly anything from insurance and you can't go buy a used patrol car. You end up having to buy a new one.
But I thought the used car market was, was
Nobody, nobody sells used police vehicles normally until they're completely worn out and put them on gov deals. Remember, uh, police cars have, um, they're built to a different standard. They're not a regular sedan.
I understand.
You know, they, they're welded together instead of spot welded, various different things. So there's not really any market. You know, when we get rid of them here, we used to give them to the schools and we had the Fords and we sell them on gov deals, but there's not a really many used ones out there that you can go pick up for what you get from insurance.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Colley. Thank you.
Sheriff, uh, Mr. Colley, I do have one curiosity question is on insurances for the equipment. Can we get insurance to cover equipment with accidents? Why don't they cover this part of the car or maybe one of your other insurances cover your equipment like they do other things?
That cost would be considerable amount more if we were considering all the equipment, but we're using equipment from other cars as well as the wrecked vehicles. We're using that equipment that we can salvage for the new vehicle. So that cost would be much more. As you know, the, uh, police car is about sixty-three thousand dollars that totally outfit. You know, with the twenty-one thousand and nineteen thousand, we're at forty. So we're, we're gonna have twenty thousand dollars worth of equipment and cages and radios and stuff that we're gonna use from other vehicles that we're turning in to, so we could reduce that cost.
So they do allow you to take your equipment, all the cars after they're
Yes. And the reason we presented it now is because right now we can order a Dodge Charger, which is what was wrecked and what we have equipment for. If we wait any longer, then we, we're gonna end up with an SUV and a lot of that equipment cannot be reused. But right now we can still order Dodge Chargers. And on a good note, we had a Dodge Charger that went in service a week ago, was run into by a pickup truck right in the back yesterday. And the doors won't close.
You said that was a good note.
Sarcasm. Just went on the road last week, correct?
It wasn't our fault.
It wasn't our fault. I mean, since nobody ran, that's the good news. And they were sitting still and And they were sitting still and a pickup truck ran into the back of them, basically destroyed the back of their car. Nobody was hurt.
Well, that's the good news is nobody was hurt. Is the, is the insurance company going to pay full value for a brand new car?
They're probably going to try to fix it.
Oh, great. All right, Mr. Underwood.
Yeah, 2,500 miles.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, is there a second to approving the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Underwood, seconded by Mr. Sealy to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. Mr. Fincham here. Mr. Fincham, would it be possible for us to do the first reading of Rural Resorts Agenda Item Number Nine? And then we could take a break possibly? Actually, we could do nine and 11.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the first item is a first reading for TXT 02-2023, which is an amendment to the development standards for rural resorts. Those standards are contained in Article 15, Section 8. Rural resorts cover certain uses of large rural tracts of land for recreational, social, or other similar types of uses. The current ordinance, on the second page, you'll see we have different room numbers depending on the acreage of the property in question. So you could have like a hotel or conference facility, meeting rooms, et cetera. The proposed text amendment would reduce the minimum acreage threshold from 200 acres to 150 acres for these types of uses. And the proposed amendment was driven by a request for a property that contains about 170 acres of land. The initial proposal was for a therapeutic healthcare facility, which the application itself did not meet that definition of a therapeutic healthcare facility. So in discussions with the planning commission, staff determined that this was the appropriate category, except for the fact that the use did not meet the minimum lot size requirements. So the planning commission had staff prepare this text amendment for consideration and forwarded this to the board. Now, the board obviously can do, has a number of options available to it. You can continue the first reading tonight if you want some more background information. You can authorize the public hearing if you so desire, or you could defer this request to a later date.
Mr. Fincham, where is this applicant that's the genesis of this request?
It's located off of Devil's Three Jump Road, Route 676.
It was in the Matapan Island District?
Yes, sir.
That's interesting, okay. Yeah, I think I'd like to talk to you a little bit more, so can we delay this?
You want to continue this to your next meeting?
Yes.
That's fine.
Okay. All right, thank you.
A motion would probably be in order.
All right, is there a motion to defer this to our next meeting? Please?
I'll make the motion for Mr. Thomas that we defer this to our next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. Second. The motion's made by Mr. Sealy, seconded by Mr. Underwood. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Colley, you and Mr. Parton are going to do Agenda Item Number Seven. I see Mr. Rob Mahoney's already left. The request to have no special exception for the Commonwealth's Attorney's vacancy. What did I say, exception? An election exception.
We would request no special exception as well. It is pretty much the same thing we did when Sheriff Lippert retired. And it's a cost for a special election is at least $50,000. And trying to get poll workers to work is not easy. So we'd recommend that you adopt the resolution.
I'll make a motion, we accept the request for no special election for the Commonwealth's Attorney until November 2023, regular cycle.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion? Motion's made by Mr. Sealy and seconded by Mr. Black that no special exception.
You're stuck in exception.
I'm stuck. No special election will be held for the Commonwealth's Attorney vacancy due to the fact that it's within a year of his resignation and the actual general election. Discussion on the motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Fincham, can you come back, please? We're going to do Agenda Item Number 11, and then we're going to take a break. I'm sorry. I thought we did the consent agenda. Motion to make sure. Mr. McKenzie, does Mr. Sealy's motion take care of all the requirements for the special election? Or do you have some other?
I need to file a petition with the court, but now that you have authorized me to do that, I'll file the pleading tomorrow.
My question was, we have three different things here. Do we just, all that was mentioned was, number one, I just want to make sure we've got it all covered before we all go our merry ways. I did not say Ben Height's name, that is true.
Well, you know, if you'd like to clarify, I mean, what we'd really like you to do is adopt this. I mean, yeah, I mean, I understood you to authorize this to do all three things, but if you'd like to amend your motion to clarify that, I certainly have no objection.
All I heard was a motion for number one. I just don't want us to get into trouble, so.
Mr. Sealy is going to clarify his motion.
I will clarify my motion. I thought I'd covered all three things, but there'd be no special election that Benjamin Height will be vested, the powers of the Commonwealth's Attorney and through 31 December 2023, and that we will hold an election for that office on November 7, 2023.
Right, and I will file a petition to that effect, requesting to the court enter that order.
There'd be no special election.
All right, that's what the petition. You sure, you sure it's not special exception?
I'm pretty sure.
Who made the second? Mr. Black, was that you or? Mr. Forehand made the second. Mr. Forehand, you amend your second and?
I'll amend my second.
Clarify your second. All right, again, if there's no further discussion, we will take Mr. Sealy's clarifying motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously, and we will take about a 15-minute break or so and come back at 7:30 for public hearing. Sorry, we missed that. Public comment and public hearing. Thank you, we'll be back at 7:30 or close to it.
Oh, thank you, Brian. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we will reconvene. Ready, Ms. Hall? We will reconvene with the public comment part of our agenda. Public comment is the board's opportunity to allow any citizen to speak on any matter that is not a public hearing. If you are here to talk about the budget, which I'm sure a lot of you are, please wait until we do the budget public hearing. Public comment, again, is for anything that is not a public hearing or a public hearing we had last month. So on that note, I will open up the floor for public comment. If there is anyone who would like to speak for public comment. Mrs. Carson, good to see you.
You too. Good evening, Chairman and Vice Chairman. I appreciate you letting me speak this evening. I just want to thank the broadband committee for all their hard work. I am so excited to have Internet on Panola Road, and so are all three other people on my road. I mean, this has just been like a dream come true, and I appreciate all the hard work that the committee did and that you all have the time you've invested and all the meetings. But thank you so much, and I'm sure the people on Lady Smith Road are ecstatic also. But thank you so much for all the hard work, and it's a wonderful thing to have. Thank you. Can I clap for that?
Mrs. Wong, you are out of order. And the school people knew not to clap, and thank you for using your restraint. There will be no more clapping or booing tonight, please. Thank you, Mrs. Carson. And a note for her, we don't normally respond to public comment like that, but some of the things that the people on Panola Road did, which happens to be the district that I represent, they went door-to-door and collected petitions and signatures that we included as part of our application, and that made our application that much more attractive. So thanks for your hard work, too. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding public comment? Mr. Hubbard, if you would like to come on down?
Chairman Thomas, Vice Chairman Sealy, members of the board, good evening. My name is Mike Hubbard. I live at 107.
No, just your voting district is Bowling Green.
Bowling Green. I'm here tonight to really extend a heartfelt thank you for the leadership of both yourself, sir, and Mrs. Sealy in support of the Innovation Challenge that the University of Mary Washington hosted at our Dahlgren campus. I am the director of that research facility, and for the first time, we had 22 high school districts representing wide portion of the Northern Neck and the Spotsylvania region. I'm also proud to say that we had a high representation from Caroline County High School this year. They did very well. They were led by Mr. Driscoll with three students, Melanie Squires, Olivia Monahan, and Karina Carroll. We've got pictures of them, we'll send them to you later on. But I really appreciate the support that we've gotten from your leadership. As retired Marine, I can tell you when I see good leadership. And I saw with your leadership, your example, and your support there on the scene as we're going forward. We look forward to going on next year, making it even much larger, and we're looking forward to your continued support. That means I have a few extra seconds, there are a lot of school folks here, so I would commend them in the STEM program that they have because that is the backbone of the Innovation Challenge. So I appreciate your support and look forward to your continued participation and support.
Thank you, and that was Colonel Hubbard, wasn't it?
Colonel, yes, sir.
Colonel Hubbard, thank you, Colonel.
Right, thanks. Have a good one.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding public comment?
Probably surprised that I'm not here to talk about the budget, but my name is Paige Carter, and I'm a longtime resident of the Mattoff-Pine District. And the first thing I'd like to say is I'm a proud resident of Caroline County, and I'm, I make a long drive now every day to work, and I will tell you, there is nothing more beautiful than Caroline in the spring. Tonight, I would like to talk to you about professionalism, and as a citizen, I have expectations for this community and how we behave, especially from that dais. My grandmother, who raised me, said, "You can speak your mind," and boy, I do, "but there is never any reason to be rude." As I was driving in tonight, I was attempting to listen to the meeting, and speaking of Internet, Nancy, it was buffering a bit, but I did catch some of it, and you broke my grandmother's basic rule. I heard you say in a recent meeting that you care desperately for the 740, meaning the employees of the school system. If that's true, then I expect you would show the care and appropriate level of decorum and respect that they show to you. As a citizen, it's my expectation that you treat others with respect always, and you do most of the time, but I have witnessed on multiple occasions that not being the case with employees of the school division, especially women, I'm going to go ahead and say it, and it's my expectation that you refrain from sarcasm from the dais. It's also my expectation as a voting citizen that you come ready and have read what has been given to you, and if you didn't get what you need, ask for it. It's also my expectation that you somehow acknowledge the behavior that I saw tonight and have seen or heard, heard in a buffering way, but heard tonight, and I was not the only person who thought so. When I asked what I could say during public comment, I asked if I could talk about professionalism because that's not about the budget, and somebody said yes. So I hope that's true, but I do appreciate those of you who make every effort to be professional in your communications, but that's not true of all of you, and you know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. That's appropriate. That was not intended for sarcasm, and I'm not sure who your comment was directed at, but on behalf of the entire board, if that was the case, it was not intended, and we will make every effort to make sure that doesn't happen. Dr. Monroe, public comments, sir?
Yes, sir, thank you. I don't know if you all know, but I think it's very appropriate that we recognize someone. Our school board has been recognized as the state school board of the year. Mrs. Stevens has been recognized on the state level. Andrea Ross has been recognized on the state level. Recently, Mrs. Haley was recognized on the state level as the mentor of the year. I've been blessed that I've been recognized on the state and national level, but I think it is very appropriate, and I would ask that this board recognize officially at the next meeting Dr. Calverick for being the superintendent of the year. So I kindly asked the board if she could be recognized publicly for her dedication and hard work. She is a come here and not a from here, but she lives here and her heart is here, and I think as voted officials, her nomination and recognition and her award should be recognized. Thank you.
Dr. Monroe, you may not know that that recognition was intended for this meeting, but I believe Chair Kelly couldn't make it on time, so it's postponed to the next meeting? So we had plans to do it this meeting?
Beat me to the punch. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding public comment? Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding public comment? Last opportunity?
Hi, yes, I'd like to speak. First of all, I came straight from work. I've been protecting the work zones that have been putting in the Internet that everyone's so excited about, so I apologize that I'm...
Let's skip a couple of ways for you, too.
Yeah, I'm not dressed appropriately, but I did just work a 12-hour shift, making sure traffic could flow while that was being installed, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, please, please just state your name and your voting district.
My vote, I vote at Dawn Library.
That's Reedy Church.
Okay, Reedy Church. And then I spoke to Mr. Underwood last month about this issue, and I wasn't prepared to talk then, and I'm not totally as prepared as I wish I was today, but I'm just going to go for it.
Okay, if you'll take your time, first of all, and state your name.
My name is Arcadia Shanklin.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. So I'm worried about a property that's near the intersection of McBryant and Drybridge Road, and I'm worried about it because in just the last couple of months, they've been deforesting it from before the sun is up till way after the sun is down, so all into the night. They don't have permits posted, they took out 10 acres of trees, there's no explanation for what's going on, then they started putting cones in the road, which I don't think is lawful for just random citizens to stop traffic, since my job is to stop traffic, and we always have to talk to Virginia Department of Transportation before we do that, and these people are just putting cones out willy-nilly, and then they have been burning piles of god knows what, like huge piles. When I left the meeting last time, I heard that they'd been issued a cease and desist, but when I got home from last month's meeting, there was a huge pile with white smoke going up in the middle, and it looked like they were just burning like the brush or whatever from all these trees that they ripped up. And now there's just, well, first of all, on Drybridge Road, any road that connects to Drybridge Road has signs stating that truck traffic and through traffic is restricted, prohibited, I don't know the exact wording, but there's clearly large signs explaining that we just can't have 18-wheelers rushing around all the time. So the property that I'm describing has, at a minimum, 10 tractor-trailers parked on it every day, as well as just rows and rows and rows of what I call muscle cars, so they just have rows of cars in the front and then tractor-trailers all lined up in the back going up the hill. And it's constant construction and ripping stuff up. And then the other issue is that they've installed incredibly bright lights that are on all night long, so it's kind of like a, whatever they use at a gas station, that's what these are like, and they're in all, the trees that they have left, all are now fitted with these jerry-rigged lights that are incredibly bright, and it seems like a little bit of overkill since this is, you know, this was a relatively dark road before this, this started happening. And another thing that I was concerned about is that they had a motorized buggy that they were running up and down Drybridge Road, and the place that I'm describing is to begin with, and they have, they have a buggy, and it's fitted with the lights, you know, you can use amber lights, but this is the red, blue, and white light, so they have like a patrol car light on top of it, and... have like a patrol car light on top of it and kids in it, running it up and down Drybridge Road. So that seems disconcerting. Yeah, and then...
I'm going to ask you to summarize, because your time is up.
I just have a lot. Those are, that's pretty much it. I'm just wondering, I'm just trying to understand why there's suddenly this amazing amount of traffic and trucks and everything.
Okay.
That's very much it.
Thank you for that. I think Mr. Underwood has got that. And Mr. Whitman in the back is taking care of that. He's the one who issued the cease and desist order. So thank you for that. Go right ahead now, if you'd like. Is there anyone else who would like to speak as part of public comment at this time? Is there anyone else who would like to speak as part of public comment? Anyone else would like to speak? Hearing none, we will declare the public comment section to be closed. And now we will get to the public hearings. Mr. Cully? We have three public hearings that will be yours and yours alone. The first public hearing is the proposed tax rates for the calendar year 2023.
You're not sure? I rearranged my book. Our first public hearing is on the tax rates for FY24. Well, it's actually calendar year FY23. They affect the 24 budget. We did not advertise under your direction. We did not advertise any tax rate. There's no PowerPoint for that while he works on getting that working. And so those rates are all included in your board packet. Real estate stays at seventy-seven cents per hundred-dollar assessed, personal property at three fifty per hundred dollars assessed, alternative personal property, two forty-five of a hundred assessed, data center rate of a dollar twenty-five, a hundred. And then there's some other for boats and watercraft and those things. All those are exactly the same as they were in calendar year 23. And so we recommend after a public hearing, adoption of those rates, so that the commissioner revenue can produce the land and personal property books, and then turn those over to the treasurer, so they can get the bills prepared and then have those sent out to be printed and mailed. And as you remember, in the fall, the printing and mailing company was having all kinds of issues. So the first people in the door will more likely get those sent out. Taxes are due June 5th, so we'd like those to be in the mail by the first part of May.
Mr. Cully, before I open the public hearing, Mr. Parton wanted me to make sure that we talked about the Personal Property Relief Act.
When you go to adopt, we would recommend twenty-four cents for the tax year. Last year was twenty-three point six, but due to some additional funds that were unused from prior years, because you know that amount is capped and was capped nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand and three, or something like that. So it depends on how many cars we have every year as to how much of that gets used. But the commissioner's office has recommended twenty-four percent. So when you adopt the rates, you would need to adopt that twenty-four percent.
Thank you, sir. Any questions with Mr. Cully at this time? Thank you, Mr. Cully. At this point, we will open the public hearing for the proposed calendar year 2023 tax rates. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding the tax rate proposal?
Good evening, Chair Thomas, Vice Chair Sealy, and members of the board. I am Marcia Stevens, a Port Royal taxpayer, a CCPS employee, and a parent of three CCPS graduates. I would like to discuss the zero-cent proposed tax increase. Proposing a zero-cent tax increase limits the flexibility of the board to navigate through the many priorities presented to them by the school board, the county administrator, and the superintendent. With advertising a zero cent proposed tax rate, I would like to point out some tax statistics. The tax collections over the past several years have been upwards of $2 million greater than actual budgets. That possibly with the zero tax increase proposed, there appears to be more revenues than budgeted that can be utilized to fund priorities. In 2014, there was eleven cents tax increase, which was stated to be able to pay for the school debt service payments. In addition, the meals tax has been up and is also utilized to pay school debt service. The school debt service towards school debt, or the school debt service payments have been reducing over the past several years and have not been given to the schools in the operation funds. Thus, I ask, where is the reduced school debt payment being funded in the county budget? Actually, county tax collections increased $15 million from 2010 to 2023. However, the schools' increase was 5.51 million, of which 600,000 is for school bus replacements that were not funded in 2010. Therefore, 4.55 million has been the increase for schools over a thirteen-year period, or thirty percent of the amount of the collections provided to schools for operations. To put that in perspective, the county has received seventy percent of the tax collections and have half of the amount of staff in which the schools have. School employee count is double the county staff, but we've received one-third of the new tax collections. Let me repeat that again. The school staff is double the amount of county staff. However, we have received one-third of the new tax collections. Keep in mind, I'm only referencing the tax collections and no other funding streams. But proposing a zero-cent tax increase certainly limits the ability of the board supervisors to hear from constituents, of which I am one, who are willing to pay an additional tax increase. However, review of the budget versus actuals, possibly the debt service school payments reductions, or looking at the tax collections over the past thirteen years, may be able to help with the funding to propose budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding the tax rates for 2023? Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding the tax rates for 2023? Last call. Anyone who would like to speak on the tax rates? That public hearing is declared closed. Mr. Cully, I think you wanted us to take action after the public hearings or right now?
I would recommend you take action now. The only thing you can do with tax rates now is then re-advertise, which would put you into May, holding a public hearing, and would put, you'd have to then extend your June tax deadline months beyond.
Right. Okay. How does the board wish to handle this matter? Is there a motion to adopt the tax rates as is, or a motion to re-advertise?
I'm making a motion that we adopt as is.
Second.
Got another motion? Motion to adopt the tax rates as they are presented with the twenty-four percent for Personal Property Tax Relief Act.
I'll amend that to include the twenty-four percent.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Cully. Our next public hearing is on the county administrator's proposed budget for fiscal year 23 to 24. And I will remind everyone as they come forward to talk, this is the county administrator's proposed budget. The board intends to have several work sessions to come up with the final budget. Your input will be taken into consideration. Mr. Cully?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have PowerPoint to go through that has, you know, basic numbers in it. The FY24 general fund budget is proposed at sixty-four million, five hundred twenty-five thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars, which is five million, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-six more than the FY23, which is eight point eight nine percent. The major increases to the 24 budget, we'll list out some of the top increases to the budget. The number one increase is transfer to utility fund, which is one million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred eighty-four dollars, which is nineteen percent of the overall increase. That includes a decrease in utility connections, which is eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred ninety-nine dollars, which is eleven percent of the, eleven point nine percent of the actual increase in that transfer. And we don't believe with the downturn in the housing market, and really only one neighborhood that's having any development, and one of our other large neighborhoods is out of, just about out of lots and hasn't started any of the preparation and construction to actually build the infrastructure for new lots, which would take most likely more than a year. We don't believe we'll have the connection revenue that we have had in the last two years. This includes an increase in utility debt service that Mrs. Smith talked about earlier when we were asked, which is four hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars, or six percent of the increase. And I left my war. Number two is salary increases of six percent or a dollar seventy-five minimum hourly increase for all employees. That's one million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. Five hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven fourteen, or seven point nine percent of that increase is non-public safety. Three hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars, or five point five percent of that increase is from the public safety pay plan that the board adopted two years ago. One hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars is, or two percent is FICA, and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars, which is about one point four percent, is mandated five percent for comp board employees by the General Assembly, and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars, which is mandated for the sheriff's office employees. It's another comp board mandate. Number three, fully funding nineteen new fire rescue positions for Carmel Church Station approved in FY23. As you may recall, we applied for a SAFER grant for that million dollars, but did not receive that. Only a couple of localities in the state of Virginia received any funding at all. And we've had to hire those. We're building the station. So that equates to about a fifteen point four percent increase of the general fund to fund that. Number four is the increase to school operations transfer of eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. It's eight point eight percent of the general fund increase. Number five, proposed ten new public safety full-time employees, nine of which are firing EMS, and one additional to Carmel Church. And that's only approved if the SAFER grant's successful. It's only, they'll only be hired. So we're not looking to hire any positions that are not funded by the SAFER grant, other than one animal control officer and associated benefits. So that one's not SAFER grant. The animal control's just straight funded, and that total cost is six hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. Four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars is salaries, which is six point nine percent of that overall general fund increase. One hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two eighty-six is benefits, which is about two percent of that overall increase. Six, the county share of increased cost for employee health insurance, four hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's six percent of the general fund increase. Increase to Virginia retirement system, that's three hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. And that does include the one point eight five percent public safety increase of a multiplier the board approved several months ago. And that's four point six percent of the general fund increase. Number eight, seven new FTE positions. Five converted from part-time. So these are folks that are already working. One customer service agent in the commissioner revenues office, one assistant registrar, one groundscreaper in public works, one senior office assistant in planning, and one utilities detection in public utilities. And two new FTEs. So out of the seven positions that go in full-time, two are new totally. One is a tax examiner commissioner revenue, and one is an accountant in finance. And the accountant position was recommended, two positions recommended for the finance department. I've only recommended funding one of those. Cost of that, three hundred and sixteen thousand, two fifty-five, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, five ninety-four in salaries, which is three point three percent of the increase, and eighty-two thousand for benefits. I got a sip. Number nine is increased cost of regional corrections. Pamukki Regional Jail and Merrimack Juvenile Detention Center, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars, three point six percent of the general fund increase. Ten, transfer to social services fund, two hundred thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars, two point nine percent of the general fund increase. Eleven, increase for a new part-time position in facilities, technician in public works, twenty-five thousand, four seventy-six, which is point four percent of the general fund increase. And then our one negative transfer to debt retirement fund is coming down, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars, which is a thirteen point five percent decrease in the general fund increase. So that's where we did save some money. These are our funds. Social service fund increasing a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Children's Services Act, CSA, as it's known, still staying at two point three million. Debt retirement fund overall coming down, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars, or minus three point five eight percent. All of the little funds, I won't read too much. Tourism's up twenty-eight thousand, four ninety-five, and that's mainly almost a hundred percent supported by TOT, transportation-oriented tax. Fire rescue grants is grants. The proffer fund, I can't see, is up twenty-five thousand. We do have some more proffers that have come in with the development that's going on in Pendleton. That's up about nineteen thousand dollars. All small, I won't go over those. Utility is a big number. That, the overall fund is decreasing one million, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six fifty-four. But even with that, with the increased, the decrease in connections, it's still requiring a large transfer from the general fund. Don Waste Water Fund's up fifteen thousand. Caroline Detention Center, we think will be with the carryover funds and funds available. And the end of the pandemic in May will allow that facility to be able to operate at capacity instead of a reduced capacity that they've operated. So we've been operating at the guaranteed minimum since COVID. We'll be able to actually operate more efficiently there. There is no CARES Act funding anymore, so that last little bit of money, forty-two thousand, is gone. So that's a loss. Environmental management funds up about eighty-six thousand. The capital improvements fund is one where we went way down. As you remember, Courtney Rogers from Davenport was here last year and told us we were out pretty much our borrowing capacity until FY27. So I don't recommend really funding too many things in capital improvements that I didn't have cash for, other than some of the lease purchases of vehicles. So there's no real big projects in that. School capital improvements fund's also down, one million, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine thirty-two, for the same reason. The general fund is up five point two, five million, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, ninety-six, as we covered earlier. It's about eight point eight nine and forty-eight percent of the total of all funds. School operations fund is up one point six, one million, six hundred, twelve thousand, one fifteen. It's about three point oh one and forty percent, forty point nine eight percent of all the funds. Textbook fund, which is a state mandated fund, we put in the amount that we're told, fourteen thousand more. Their special grant funds, which is a lot of federal money, is decreasing one million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand and fourteen. But that's not in their operations fund. That's a nine point two six decrease, but it is eight point two percent of our overall funds. And I can't see cafeteria real good because of that monitor, but cafeteria fund's up about one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eighteen, and no local dollars in the cafeteria fund. Our transfers between funds is up one million, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars, given a lot of that was utilities. Total combined funds, last year's total budget was one hundred and thirty-five million, six hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. This budget, I'm recommending one hundred and thirty-four million, seven hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and eighty-five, which is eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars year over year, which is a point seven four percent down. which is eight hundred and seventy six thousand, two hundred and seventy three dollars year over year, which is a point seven four percent down. Total request from departments was sixty six million, two hundred and seventy one thousand, eight hundred and seventy, which was a seven million, sixteen thousand, two hundred and sixty three dollar, or twelve point eight percent request from all departments. I recommended, I, and out of that, I cut one million, seven hundred and forty six thousand, two hundred and seventy seven from those requests. I proposed and we went over this, we've already cut, just kind of put that slide in. Probably why I didn't have this slide in last year's, but anyway, real estate rates stay the same, personal property the same. We do have a balance and number in there of two million, five hundred and fifty one thousand and sixty eight dollars from the fund, undesignedated fund balance to make the revenues and expenditures balance. FY twenty three adopted budget had a balance and then transfer from undesignedated fund balance of reserves of one million, two hundred and eighty, seventy eight thousand, three hundred and eleven. So you can see we've about doubled that, that's a one million, two hundred and seventy two thousand, seven fifty six increase, or ninety nine percent increase for that balance and number. Mr. Thomas had asked that we include a dollar bill that kind of shows where things go. It's really hard to make that show up real good. But this is general fund and debt expenditures for the twenty four dollar. You can see public education is thirty two cent and this includes all debt, public safety thirty one cent. Without the debt in this dollar, that flips the other way, public works is nine cent, county administration is eight cents. Debt's five cents, transfers are six. And then everything else drops down, parks and rec two cents, community development two cents, judicial's probably in that same boat, two cents. This is a dollar bill that recommends, that shows no debt allocated to the various departments. Public safety's thirty two cent and education is twenty seven cent, public works is nine, county administration is nine, debt is eight. So that's where debt gets its own just eight cents, but that does divide up to multiple different departments that way. Transfer is six and then there again, everything else is down at the one cent level. This is where our revenue comes from, real estate taxes, forty eight cents, personal property taxes. Is that a two? Nineteen, that's what it sort of looked like, but I couldn't see my eyes at all. State revenue ten cents, other local taxes, machinery and tools is two cents. Federal two cents, transfers five cents, charges for services two cent, use of money two cent. And the one I can't read is other local taxes. But that's about the same size as the state at ten cent. You can see those on your computer screen, they get hard when you do it in here. FY twenty four, school operations fund, fifty five million, two hundred and twenty eight thousand and ninety four dollars, increasing one million, six hundred and twelve, twelve thousand and one hundred and fifteen dollars, or three point oh one percent. FY twenty three, school operations fund adopted budget was fifty three million, six hundred and fifteen, nine seventy nine. This was a five million, nine hundred and fifty, ninety five thousand, eight hundred and twenty one more than the actual expenditures of FY twenty two. FY twenty four, proposed school operations fund of the fifty five million is ten million, four hundred and thirty one thousand, four hundred and fifty nine dollars more than the adopted twenty one budget of forty four million, seven hundred and ninety six thousand, six hundred and thirty five. There had been mention of, you know, as you brought up earlier, level funding. And while the local government level funded the state did not, this equivalent to twenty three thou, twenty three point two nine percent budget increase in four years, or five point eight two yearly increase. FY twenty four, proposed general fund of sixty four million, five twenty five, five hundred and ninety three dollars is nine million, twenty five thousand and ninety three more than the adopted FY twenty budget of fifty five million, five hundred and five, five hundred thousand, five hundred dollars. And this equivalent to a sixteen point two, six percent budget increase in four years, or four point seven percent yearly increase. School textbook fund, five hundred and forty nine thousand, three hundred and seventy seven, increasing the fourteen thousand, five hundred and sixty two. And that is all directed, it's got state money, local money. And we match what's required by the state. School special funds is eleven million, one fifty six and one dollar, which is decreasing to one million, one hundred and thirty nine thousand and fourteen dollars, or nine point two six percent decreasing in federal funds. In FY twenty one, the school special funds expenditures were one million, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So there's been a tremendous increase in that since the pandemic. School food service funded at two million, five hundred and thirty nine thousand, eight oh nine, which is increasing a hundred and fifty eight thousand and eighteen dollars, or six point six three percent. There is no local money in that. The total school budget, sixty nine million, four hundred and seventy three thousand, two hundred and eighty one dollars, increasing six hundred and forty five thousand, six hundred and eighty one, or point nine four percent. Given the decrease that's in special funds. For FY twenty one, the total school budget expenditures were forty eight million, nine hundred and forty one thousand, five hundred and fifty eight dollars. Local funds to schools, we do the transfer, sixteen million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, which was increasing seven hundred and sixty seven thousand, three hundred and forty eight dollars, or five percent. Transfer to textbook fund is a hundred and ninety eight thousand, four ninety. Transfer to bus leases, the same as last year, two hundred and twenty seven thousand, six hundred and eighty five. And transfer to school CIP, bus purchases, six hundred and thirty six thousand, five hundred and seventy seven dollars, increasing fifty seven thousand and sixty eight dollars, or nine point eight five percent. Total to schools, seventeen, this is local funds only, seventeen million, one hundred and seventy seven thousand and sixty two dollars, increasing eight hundred and twenty nine thousand, six seventy seven, or five point oh eight percent. Capital improvements projects is local funds, we did teacher laptops at fifty thousand, a support vehicle at fifty thousand. That is decreasing one hundred and two, one million, two hundred and thirty five thousand, or ninety two point five percent. In the past, we have borrowed money, just like in our CIP for those where those are proposed to be paid for from the detention center. In FY twenty three, we included a one-time transfer from reserves of a million dollars and two hundred and thirty five thousand from loan proceeds. So while we did go down, you can see where all that money came from last year. School debt service, four million, five hundred and twenty seven thousand, six hundred and ninety seven dollars, which is decreasing four hundred and sixty one thousand, three hundred and sixty six dollars, or minus nine point two five percent. Local funds for schools total, twenty one million, eight oh four, eight hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and fifty nine dollars, which is decreasing eight hundred and sixty six thousand, six hundred and eighty eight, or minus three point eight two percent. FY twenty three, total local funds for schools was twenty two million, six hundred and seventy one thousand, four hundred and seventy seven, four hundred and forty seven dollars. But all of that decreases for the most part in CIP. I know that's hard to read, it's hard to read on my computer, just kind of gives you a pie chart, where the school operation fund, forty one thousand, I mean forty one percent's the little green. The next largest thing is general fund. Don Wastewater Fund, Utilities Fund, school special grant funds is that yellow slice on the bottom. So you can just kind of see where all the schools in the general funnel, two largest things, everything else is relatively the same size or really small. I'd like to thank Tamika Smith, the Director of Finance, and Alan Pardon for their help in preparation of the budget, the budget memo, and for working through this PowerPoint and to make sure I, I took out a bunch of slides and added a bunch of things to make it as clear as possible. And that's all I have until we have the CIP.
Thank you, Mr. Colley. One thing that you touched on that, that we really need to highlight again is the CSA Child's Services Act, or what was Comprisive Services Act.
Comprisive Services Act.
Two point three million dollars is the county's contribution there.
No, no, that's the total fund, we still putting in seven hundred and some odd thousand, but that hadn't changed much over the years.
Seven hundred and some thousand.
Yeah, the state puts in the largest share.
That, that total number used to all be state. So that, the total was all state.
No.
At one time or another, at least for, for us.
Well, yeah, middle sexy was reversed for me, I had to put in more local than I did, the state put in less because it's sort of like composite index, they, they do it, you know, a different funding, but it's similar. But I didn't know anybody had all state money, I know it's never that blessed.
I think Mr. Sealy and I were here when it was all state money. And, and that's seven hundred thousand the county doesn't have to use for other things, but
Correct.
That was the only point I wanted to make, thank you for that presentation. It's time now for the budget public hearing.
Can we ask him a question first?
Oh, I'm sorry, you have a question? Mr. Underwood, slide number eleven, or number nine, I'm sorry. You talked about animal control addition.
Yeah, I had, I recommend an extra deputy in animal control.
Right, can you, that, look at the number, the, the number looked awful. Can we just go back to that?
That wasn't just for the animal control, that was for all.
That was total, gotcha, okay, yeah, that was, thank you.
No, animal control.
One, then you, okay.
That was for the whole thing, I just broke out what we, that's firefighters and animal control. But the only one we would hire if we don't get the grant funding for revenue would be the animal control. But that's on the pay plan, so that would be the starting pay of the pay plan for.
But in your slide, he said one additional person for animal control.
Four hundred and some thousand.
Yeah, that's where the number ended up. That was part of their consolidation to get more things on my slide.
Okay, all right, that clears it, okay, I think we're on the same page then. Thank you, Mr. Black, Mr. Colley, before you go away.
Colley? Just real brief, and, and I know we just got the budget, so is there, at one of our previous meetings, a couple of meetings ago, we decided to take over social services.
Correct.
And so is there a budget impact, will there be a budget impact to the county?
We haven't changed anything to the budget, recommended budget since you made that.
But I'm asking, will there be a, will there, will there be any sort of budget impact?
That would be only up to the board. There's no, there are no change since that, what's recommended for social services, the same thing that was recommended before that change.
Go ahead and say what you really mean.
There's no change that.
I understand, but you're taking on thirty five more employees.
That's a board decision, there's nothing in the budget that's related to that.
I, I get it, okay. Thank you, that's all, thank you.
Mr. Forehead, question?
Might as well just stay there, we're all gonna have questions for you, so. I, I wasn't clear with the total number for, for schools. I saw a three percent and I saw a five percent.
Remember it's operations, then they have all these other funds.
Okay.
So their special funds went down one point, one million, give or take. Plus their CIP went down one point two five. So it looks like there's no increase, but operations, there's seven hundred and some thousand, seven sixty two, which is five percent for operations.
Okay.
And that's where everybody's, that's where the categories are paid from. So instruction and attendance in health, technology, facilities, transportation are all paid out of the operations fund. And that does have five percent more.
Our sheet here says eight twenty four, four sixteen, what's the delta between those two?
Oh, buses, they're, they're paid out of that too.
All right, thank you.
No, go back again and then we'll call you back. Oh, Mr. Sealy's good and as long?
Okay, work session on the twenty fifth.
All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to open the budget public hearing. You will have three minutes to speak. What we are going to ask is you would just give us your name and your voting district. Please do not give us your address, just your name and your voting district, so we can identify you. Mr. Sadler has the mic mute button, so at the end of three minutes, if you're still talking, he will mute you. I will give you an opportunity to summarize at that state. And no applause, we can wave all, all we want, but no applause, no booing.
That's applause. That's good.
That's silent applause.
Yep, this is.
Mrs. Carson?
Yes.
If you would.
I am. Good evening Chair Thomas, Vice Chair Sealy, and members of the board. I'm Nancy Carson, Mattupena resident, school board member, retired CCPS educator and grandparent of a CHS senior. Tonight, I will let data tell the Caroline County Public School funding story, a story reflective of the critical need for a Board of Supervisors strategic plan that prioritizes a new funding method for our children, employees, and the community. To demonstrate the significant need, let's begin by reviewing five-year historical trends. Social Security has provided a twenty point three percent cost of living increase since 2019. The Consumer Price Index has increased a total of fifteen point seven percent from 2019 to 2022. And over the past five years, CCPS has received zero new local dollars for employee positions. CCPS has received zero new local dollars for expenses such as utilities, fuel, purchase services, and material and supplies. The Board of Supervisors has level funded the school division in both FY 2021 and the current fiscal year, FY 23. While CCPS has received approximately one point five million dollars over the past five years for employee raises, an annual step increase or year of service credit for approximately seven hundred employees costs approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year. These monies not only fall short of an annual step increase, but continue to perpetuate the widening gap between Caroline County Public School salaries and those of our sixteen regional competitors. As a county, we cannot continue to aim for the floor, kick the can down the road, or use the Band-Aid method to fund our school division and ultimately our students' futures. It's time for the local government to operate with great intentionality and make a sizable investment in K-12 education, because communities are indeed a reflection of the schools they keep. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you. Ms. Stevens, how are you?
Hi, good evening. Good evening Chair Thomas, Vice Chair Sealy, and members of the board. I'm Lisa Stevens, Mattupena resident, CCPS employee, parent of two CCPS graduates, alumni, grandparent of a preschooler and faith youth leader. The 2022 CPS, CCPS salary study conducted by PayPoint HR documented that our teacher salaries at zero to five years continue to trail our competitors, ranking us sixteen out of seventeen in the region. Additionally, the salary study documented fifty one percent of support and administrative staff are compensated substantially below or below market value, which has recently led to three of my support staff colleagues moving to Hanover County for similar positions paid at a much higher rate. With many regional competitors announcing raises as high as eight to twelve percent, divisions offering large recruitment and retention bonuses, and other localities advertising tax increases between ten to thirty cents, the school division's ability to recruit and retain are being drastically compromised. Additionally, with the 2018 salary study never fully realized, the gap is continually to widen and the negative impact is deepening. It must be our collaborative goal to use the 2022 compensation study data to drive funding efforts. Let's find a way to impact PayPoint HR's recommendations to achieve regional competitiveness at fiftieth percentile. We don't want to be at the top, we just simply want to be at the midpoint of our regional competitors. We must, one, adjust teacher steps zero to sixteen at a cost of five hundred and sixty three thousand dollars. Two, we need to place all seven hundred employees on the recommended pay scales at a cost of four point six million dollars to meet the fiftieth percentile. And step three, if the governor approves, approves the seven percent salary increase, an additional two percent increase must occur for CCPS to maintain the mid-market value gains made in steps one and two, at a cost of eight hundred and eighty seven thousand, six hundred and ninety four dollars. As the largest employer in the county, I recognize these numbers are large, but the future of Caroline County workforce and its citizens is dependent on what you, the Board of Supervisors, invest in today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Taylor, before you start, I'm gonna ask the people that are in line, rather than have you stand in line, if you'd like to have a seat on the first couple of rows, and then you could just come out in the same order. Thank you very much, that's a, that's a little better than standing up. Mr. Taylor, when you're ready.
Thank you, sir. Good evening Chairman Thomas and Vice Chairman Sealy and the Board of Supervisors. I'm Calvin B. Taylor, Senior, I live in the Port Royal District. And I'm speaking as a past Board of Supervisors member, right here at the privilege of serving for twenty years. While at that time, I was also employed by the Caroline County School System for thirty three years, where I served as an educator and an administrator. And now I'm entering my fourth year as a school board member. As a native of the county and a taxpaying citizen, I would ask that you give serious consideration to the funding requests that the school board is asking for. Having set where you are now sitting, I Having sat where you are now sitting, I understand the difficulty in finding the funds needed to meet our requests. However, for the next minute, I would like to focus on the impact of not meeting the requests. A great majority of our staff have to have at least a bachelor's degree, and many require special training. Some positions require a master's degree or a doctorate. There's an extreme cost associated with acquiring this level of education. When such positions are not filled or are filled with substitutes, it impacts the services rendered. This impacts student achievement, which impacts competition in the job market. Inadequate employment impacts salaries, which impacts a citizen's quality of life. Time will not permit me to speak about all the issues created by a lack of funding. I would just like to say that funding requests are needed to operate an effective and a successful school system. When those requests are not funded, those issues don't just go away. Just as Band-Aids don't heal a sore, partial funding does not fix education problems. Just as an improper medical treatment does not cure illness, partial funding does not solve education issues. Lack of funding creates problems that show up for years after a budget has been approved. As a board member and a true friend of education, I would ask that we come together and address educational issues. A board that supports education will work together to fund budget requests. And in closing, a board that has a genuine concern for children will find a way to meet student needs and keep building an educational system that ensures student success. I would ask that you not deprive the young people of Caroline County by not funding our requests. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good evening Board of Supervisors, neighbors, and community. I'm Linda Arnold, a Madison District voter and homeowner. Mother of students in all CCPS schools. Surrounded in a family of teachers in various states, and adjunct faculty instructor myself, as well as a retired nurse. My children, who are current CCPS students, are involved in a mix of general education and special education services. Some are in advanced studies. All of them come from hard places through foster care and adoption, and each are considered a racial minority here in Caroline County. I personally am an individual living with significant hidden disabilities and, among other things, am a proud stroke survivor. This is our first school year here in Caroline County. I'm honored to say it won't be our last. When I look at the Caroline County school budget and its current funding needs, I see things through all of those diverse lenses, so please listen closely. I hope you'll understand that my perspective is actually something that we all have in common. Looking at the budget needs, I see the seventh grade science teacher who's using her own funds to replenish the rewards given to the students on the effective, if not underutilized, PBIS behavior system. My daughter particularly loved the Doritos. I see the bus driver who kept my intellectually and behaviorally challenged high schooler calm and safe in her first ever tornado warning and watch here this November. It was a very, very scary situation. I see the enormous pride that my once socially awkward fifth grader has no harness by getting his first part in a school play and doing the morning announcements in entire elementary school, giving credit to his school counselor, not to mention his vice principal and all of his teachers. But finally, most importantly, I see a very brave third grader who is here today, who spoke before a school board just two months ago, putting aside her own dyslexia and ADHD and high, high functioning Asperger's to speak about school safety and the need for more pay for her teachers. All of our children are children of promise. In all these five buildings here in Caroline, Caroline County, there are vessels with amazing opportunities to pour in and pour out, but so much more is needed for them and for all of us in this community. I'm asking for each of you to fulfill your elected responsibility and recognize that this budget gap is not acceptable. You can and must be better. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Cale. I vote out of the Madison District, and I'm a parent of two CCPS students. It is said that a school system is a reflection on its community, and if that's the case, our community is struggling. We talk about building growth in our county, but in order to do so, we need a solid foundation, and that foundation is our schools. Better schools means more families want to set roots here. The more families means more businesses invest here. All this means more revenue for the county, but it all starts with the schools. With teacher salaries alone, we are at sixteenth out of seventeen in our region. Meaning not only can we not compete with surrounding counties and the hiring of new teachers, but we are losing staff to other systems. While most teachers are giving it their all, parents are seeing an increase in silently quitting because there's nothing we can do about it in replacing staff. Because, uh, because we are so short-staffed. This is leading to larger classrooms and lowering academics. In an area of lower academics rates, statistics show we start to see higher crime rates. By offering only the minimum required and little to none of the requested additional funding being asked for, you are perpetuating these issues. Please understand, before I came here, I spent hours watching videos of this board dealing with the school board. Seeing comments or hearing comments like, "That seems like a you problem," or wishing you could withhold an extra one million dollars to cause them pain. You are not just speaking to the school board who is representing our children at this meeting, but every parent who has entrusted this county with our children's education. Typically, I would end this with a thank you for hearing me, but due to the circumstances, I'll leave you with this note instead. Parents are paying attention now. We're coming together and talking, and we are not happy with how things are going. We can fix this school with you, or we can vote you out, but one way or another, we will be doing better by our children.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Ruth Taylor. I do not live in Caroline County. I'm a special education and English teacher at the high school. I'm here tonight to speak to you on the county's budget and funding the school system. I understand that times are difficult for everyone and for all financial entities. However, I have seen a great deal of growth in Caroline County in the last few years, both in homes and businesses. And yet, I wonder why, as a teacher, I have to work multiple jobs just to survive. Let me tell you my story. I've been teaching for ten years. All but one of those years has been in Caroline County. I knew that I would not get rich when I became a teacher. That wasn't my goal. I became a teacher because I felt the need to make a difference in children's lives and to help prepare them for what is ahead. When I started teaching, I never thought I would see the day that my thirty-four-year-old son, without a college education, would be making more money than I do. But here we are. My son has been working at a parts counter for nine months and makes more money per, per year than I do with a master's degree. In order for me to even barely make ends meet, let me tell you how my week goes. I work at the high school from seven AM to three PM, Monday through Friday, as contracted. I then provide virtual homebound services from three to five on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and from three to six on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. On top of that, I teach adult GED to Caroline County residents on Tuesday and Thursday evenings from five-thirty PM to eight-thirty PM. I gave up three hours' pay tonight to be here to speak to you. That's fifty-nine hours a week that I work. And then I go home and I have a full-time job. I'm a fifty-seven-year-old woman with a disabled husband who has to work sixty hours a week in order to survive. Please don't misunderstand me. I love what I do. However, if I was paid a salary that was commensurate with my education and skill, I have like two sentences.
You can continue.
I would not need to work all these jobs. I know that I'm only one of many CCPS employees that have to work multiple jobs to get by. The greatest asset and resource in this county is the children. When will you begin to invest in them and their education? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening Board of Supervisors. My name is Viola Roseby, and I'm, I vote in the Madison District. I thank you for the opportunity to speak before you on the decision that only you control and the power that you wield. Your decision greatly affects the students of Caroline County Public Schools. Before I get, begin, let me allow you to know something. I have nothing personally invested. I moved to this county twelve years ago. And though today I am an owner and a proud employee of Caroline County, I completed my master's degree in twenty twenty-one. And I chose to leave the computer field to come and assist in Caroline County because in the years that I was here, not as an employee, I saw a lot on Facebook of what the county needed, and I felt that I could contribute to the deficit that was in the county. So I began my career into the field of social worker, and I had my internship at the Caroline County Department of Social Services. And last week, I accepted a position as a behavior technician so that I can earn my certification as an applied behavior specialist. And if you don't know what that is, that is a, a field that takes a scientific approach to understanding behavior because of the children that we have at Bowling Green Elementary, where I'm currently employed. In the nine months that I have had the pleasure of working at Bowling Green through the lens of someone with limited experience in public education, I've had the opportunity to immerse myself unbiased, with no perceived expectation, solely to assist, to bring change where needed. Understand, I left a salary of a hundred and twenty-five thousand to what I'm being paid today. Immediately coming to Bowling Green, I was met with warning that the staff was difficult, the school would be hard, the challenges that I would meet, the resistance from teachers and administration. I was warned that the Board of Supervisors, the school board, and central office were difficult and unwilling to compromise and self-serving. I would like to report that none of that is true. But what I did observe is that an administration that feels unappreciated, teachers who feel that they're underpaid, overworked, and undoubted, and a Board of Supervisors, and a school board, and central office that lack trust amongst each other. I say this because through this lens that I see, from my perspective, you have a staff with undergrad degrees and a master's program, and a master's degrees, and yet you pay them a salary that requires two jobs. This is, this is not necessary. Rest, and I'm gonna go over, but I apologize.
This will be, uh, could you summarize?
Yeah, that's what I said, I'm gonna summarize. The reason why I'm here is to address the concerns of funding. And again, as I mentioned, only you control this. I ask that you work with the school board, that you work with central office, that you set aside your bias of historical issues with budget, and you find a common ground. I believe you can. They deserve this. Their children deserve this. And what you are doing is injustice. We vote you in. You need to hear us. You need to believe in your staff. If she received an award from the state and they recognized her, trust her. She needs to make the decisions that will change the lives of these students, and you're the barrier to her and their success.
Thank you.
Hello Caroline County Board of Supervisors. My name is Kristen Borsari, and while I am not a constituent, I teach and serve your constituents. I'm here to advocate for school funding, and I ask you to listen to CCPS regards to budget requests with open minds. I'm a biology teacher at Caroline High School, where I've taught for almost seven years. And for the last few years, I've taught bio2 anatomy and bio2 genetics. I would say I am well-liked and respected by students, staff, and parents. I believe I am a high-quality teacher. I build relationships with all of my students with my caring personality and my dry sense of humor. I reach a wide range of students, from athletes to video gamers, to the students that say they hate science. My room is a safe space for everyone. I tell you this to emphasize that I believe I'm the type of teacher that you want teaching your students. I love my job. I love my kids, AKA your kids. However, just because educators care deeply or are not in it for the money, that should not be used as an excuse to not help fund CCPS. I'm someone that tries to live frugally, but I can't even afford to live in the county I teach in and become your constituent. And I am drowning financially. I want everyone to think about any professional you encounter on a daily basis. According to the National Center for Education Statistics, ninety-one percent of K through twelve students were in public school in the fall of two thousand and nineteen. You are far more likely to encounter a professional that's had a K through twelve education in public schools. Why are we not investing in making their foundation as good as possible? According to a study on the social and economic benefits of public education, there are many links that show investing in public education is beneficial to the community. On average, adults with a high school diploma and some college credit are twice as likely to be employed as those that drop out. Those without a high school diploma or GED are more likely to be on government assistance. Having opportunities for a higher-paying job could mean a higher amount of taxes that can be collected. All these benefit our community, and I ask again, why are you not investing in this? What does this have to do with teachers? We have been told multiple times that having a high-quality teacher that can be a safe person for a student decreases the likelihood of that student dropping out, but you are losing many high-quality teachers because of salaries. For me, it would break my heart to leave. I found a wonderful work family, and like I said before, I love my students. But I cannot continue to live on this salary, and I am not the only one. I look at other counties and their starring salaries more than I make currently. Denying us funding that could help us because of disagreements you have with people in higher positions in CCPS is killing us. It is harming the people who are interacting with your students daily. It's punishing those of us who have zero control over the things you disagree with. Aside from retaining teachers, putting money towards schools will benefit the community like I stated earlier. Where you put your money is and if you value a healthy and happy community, then you should put it towards educator pay and school funding. I also invite anyone to come to my classroom and observe the amazing things that my students are accomplishing every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Connolly. I'm currently a CCPS employee. I've been in public education for my entire, yes, sir.
Are you in the county?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not, sir. I'm an employee of the school system.
Maybe you can restart it. Is that fair?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
I've been in education, public education for twenty years, and I've been blessed to work in districts across the Commonwealth as well as at the state level. And when I talk to my employees from across the state and former colleagues, the conversation inevitably turns to, "How do you like Caroline? What's different about Caroline?" And having been here for about a year, I can honestly tell you, it's the people in the schools, the teachers in front of our children, that, that make the difference. And, and they ask, "So what does that mean? We have good teachers everywhere." I said, "Yes, there are good teachers everywhere, but not like in Caroline County." And when I say that, what I mean is, I, I've seen teachers in Caroline, when faced with a challenge, other teachers across the state would say, "Why me?" And your teacher's here, say, "Why not me? I got this." I have a teacher in our, our building now, when a student was brought to her who did not who did not speak any English, where other teachers across the state have seen, say, I don't know what to do. Her response was, I've been waiting for years to brush up on my Spanish. That's the type of teacher we have here. When faced with a struggling student, I have seen teachers point the finger at that student, say, this is your problem. Where teachers here, when a student falters, instead of pointing the finger and say, hey, better luck next time, they pick them up, dust them off, and say, hey, I got you. We're in this together. And in return, for that grit, that dedication, and that three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day-a-year compassion and love, all we ask for is support. That's all we ask. We ask for support from our parents, to send us the best they have every day. We support our bus drivers to get our students here. We support our school nutrition staff, help feed those kids. And now we're asking for your support. And the best way that this body can support those teachers, our teachers, the teachers that are teaching your children, is to fully fund the superintendent's request. Show us we are better than fifteen out of sixteen, because we show you we're better than that every single day. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lisa Richardson, and I live in the Bowling Green District. It is my belief that we should always be focused on fact, not fault. Focusing on fault creates divisiveness, while focusing on fact creates solutions. Tonight, I will focus on finding facts regarding the Caroline County Public Schools' funding request for increasing compensation for teachers. Fact: Our children are the county's most valuable resource, and it is our obligation as parents, school staff, community members, and elected officials to ensure that we provide our children with the best education possible. A crucial element in ensuring that we are providing the best education for our children is the ability to attract and retain dedicated and experienced teachers. Fact: We are in the midst of a nationwide teacher shortage, which is making it challenging for most school systems to hire and retain teachers. Not only are teachers leaving the field at record rates, but colleges are also seeing a significant drop in students pursuing education degrees. Fact: Historically, teacher salaries have been significantly lower than those in the private sector. In many cases, teachers are forced to work second and sometimes even third jobs to provide for their families. In addition, the 2022 inflation rate of six percent has exacerbated many family struggles. Fact: It is imperative that CCPS salary rates are competitive in order to attract and retain quality teachers and staff. Currently, CCPS ranks sixteenth out of seventeen school systems in our district regarding compensation rates, and will fall to seventeen unless adequate funding is provided. Lack of funding has the potential to not only inhibit CCPS's ability to hire new teachers, but also to lead CCPS to lose current staff members, increase class sizes, and decrease class offerings. In closing, I would ask that both the Board of Supervisors and the CCPS School Board and administrators to set aside their differences and concentrate on finding fact, not fault. We all need to remember that our decisions today will affect our children's future, either positively or negatively. When in doubt, it is our responsibility to do what's best for the children. And just real quickly, I am a parent. I'm not employed by CCPS. I raised four children that attended CCPS. I now have nine grandchildren that either currently attend or previously attended. So I have a lot invested in the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to the audience. Next.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. My name is Andrea Williamson, and I am a Caroline County employee. I have dedicated the last fifteen years of my life
Do you live in the county?
I do not.
Okay.
I do not live in the county. I'm sorry. And I've dedicated my last fifteen years of working and serving the students of this county. I'm here to ask you to please fund the FY24 CCPS budget. Myself, along with a couple other teachers, designed an independent survey that we sent out to the employees of the county, independent of the School Board. And we received quite a bit of information back, a good random sample of teachers and staff. Fifty percent of the respondents live in the surrounding counties. If only five percent of those respondents chose not to come back and work in Caroline County and chose to work somewhere closer to home, would Caroline County Public Schools be able to replace them? I'm afraid not. Falling sixteenth out of seventeenth among neighboring districts in compensation, it would not be possible. Thirty-six percent of the respondents have worked for Caroline County Public Schools for less than five years. We know those are the teachers we need to retain. If five percent of those respondents choose to leave, would Caroline County be able to replace them with qualified staff? Probably not. CCPS was unable to hire enough staff needed for this school year to fill all the positions that we had open, which left a gap for other teachers already employed to have to fill and wear many, many hats to serve our students and families, which leads to the sixty-four percent of respondents saying money plus the mounting responsibilities, the higher-than-average personal time used to fill these gaps as reasons to leave the county and seek employment elsewhere. And ninety-three percent of the respondents need a second source of income to meet their basic needs. Some have even had to use the local food banks to make, as a resource, to make it to the end of the month. Also, a hundred percent of the respondents could go elsewhere. They know they could go elsewhere and make more money. Lastly, ninety-eight percent of the respondents do not feel that the Board of Supervisors supports CCPS. The Board of Supervisors, if they do not support the school's budget, does the Board of Supervisors really care about the future of Caroline County and its children? One of the deciding factors families consider when moving to a community is the schools. Help us continue to help the children of this county. In return, it will help increase tax revenue. Maybe they'll eat out more. And you guys can also do great things for the families of Caroline County. Please fund the School Board's budget in its entirety to show the families, the children, the school staff, that you do support the work of the schools and the future of Caroline County.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Lech. I'm a CCPS employee. I'm not a resident of Caroline County. I speak tonight in support of the FY24 CCPS budget. As per the pandemic impact on public education K through twelve report dated November seventh, 2022, Virginia's teacher workforce is smaller, unhappier, and less qualified than before the COVID-19 pandemic, according to a recent report from the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission. The report also told lawmakers that school staff are experiencing more student behavioral problems and mental health issues. Challenges and stressors associated with growing demands and expectations of schools as a whole are undeniably widespread. Of major concern, though, is that such challenges and stressors will only exacerbate CCPS staffing concerns, which will undoubtedly have a negative impact on CCPS student success. As Ms. Williamson previously stated, as per the survey, ninety-eight percent of respondents do not feel the Board of Supervisors support CCPS. With that being said, I do believe on some level the Board does care. I attended the Board of Supervisors meeting on February twenty-first. The Board proudly recognized several student athletes for their accomplishments. However, student accomplishments on and off the field are going to become stagnant without qualified teachers and staff to guide them. Additionally, there could be fewer class offerings at the secondary level. Class sizes will definitely be larger, and standardized test scores may fall. Please show your support for our schools, teachers, students, and families. Fund the FY24 CCPS budget in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jo Robertson. I am not a resident of Caroline County. I am an employee of the Caroline County Public Schools. I was here last year. I drive an hour one way to teaching Caroline, so that's a two-hour round trip ride for me. And last year, I asked you to do it for the kids. The school needs help. Have you been in any of the schools lately? If not, I would invite you to come to a school. You can come to my classroom. I'd be more than happy to have you come in. If you look at the Caroline County website, you will see that we have twenty-five positions open for teachers at the elementary level. Right now, twenty-five positions open. Thirteen of those positions are for this year. They're not new positions that we're looking for for next year. They're right now. Some of these positions, one of them dates back to last April. We've not been able to fill because we can't get anyone to come here to fill it. That's thirteen classrooms with long-term subs. Talk about learning loss. The strain on the teachers because subs don't write lesson plans. Some other teacher has to write those lesson plans for that teacher for that class. And if it's a special ed class, and I know there's one in my school that's not been filled this year, in addition to writing lesson plans for that teacher to teach, you have to take over all of their IEPs and write those as well. And the behaviors, they have drastically increased since the pandemic. That also adds stress when you're having to deal with behaviors because your class size is too large, because there's not enough teachers for everybody. We are sixteen out of seventeen for pay now. Why would I stay here for this? The county that I live in now pays more than Caroline County. If I return to that county, not only will I have more money, but I'll have more money in my pocket because I'll be paying less for gas for the drive. The children, your children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, cousins, they are the ones being hurt by this. Please fund the schools, for I may not be back here next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Amy McFarland, Bowling Green. I am a resident of Caroline, a mother of two Caroline students and a reading specialist at Madison Elementary. I also attended Caroline kindergarten through twelfth grade. As a homeowner, parent, employee, and taxpayer in this county, I want my money going towards the children. They deserve nothing less than an exceptional education from highly qualified staff members. They deserve opportunities to learn real-life skills partnered with members of the community. They deserve consistency that comes with staff who are well-paid and able to afford a livable lifestyle. They deserve better than what we are currently providing them due to the lack of funds that are given to the schools. At what point are we going to prioritize the future of Caroline's children? As a parent, the amount of turnover that takes place in the school system is concerning. This is detrimental to our children. It robs them of the opportunity to build relationships with the faculty and staff. It robs them of having a teacher who is well-versed in the academic progress programs that Caroline utilizes. It robs them of the consistency that is vital to their academic well-being. Yet, who can fault the teachers for moving to a place where they are better supported and valued? As a reading specialist, part of my responsibility is to train and coach teachers in the core programs that we implement at the elementary level. We put in so much work. However, time and time again, we see after one or two years, teachers move on to a county who is willing to invest more into their schools. Caroline County is literally training teachers for other counties. We train them on best practices and show them good instruction. And those other counties are reaping the benefits. In the past few years, there has been a severe increase in staff turnover. So how can we entice and retain great staff members when they can drive twenty minutes in either direction and earn more than they can in Caroline? Our actions reflect what we value. When we're sick, we don't go to any doctor. We want a doctor that is skilled and knowledgeable about our illness. Why is it that we're not willing to invest that same way in our children's education? Why are we not ensuring that they have the best people taking care of them? The best drivers transporting them, the best teachers instructing them, the best support and care while they are away from us for up to ten hours a day? They deserve that. Caroline is ranked sixteen out of seventeen in teacher pay in surrounding counties. How is that encouraging the best to come and stay to teach our students? Our parents are up at twelve dollars an hour. That's disgraceful. My daughter, my sixteen-year-old daughter, can make more at her job. Sixteen out of seventeen. As a resident of this county, that is embarrassing. When looking at where you are placing money, you need to make sure that education, care, and betterment of the children of Caroline are our top priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Andrea Brock, and I currently reside in the Bowling Green District. And I have been teaching at Madison for nine years. With me, I have Kelsey Smith, who was also a teacher at Madison for the past eight years and has lived in the county for eight years, and Sarah Flippin, who has taught at Madison for nine years as well and has resided in Caroline her entire life. Tonight, I would like to speak to you about support. As teachers, it is our job to support our students in every way imaginable. We support our students in the classrooms by buying them school supplies and materials that they need for class projects when their family cannot afford them. We provide incentives for classroom management, and that is always on the top of every teacher's shopping list. We support our students by meeting their physical needs by purchasing tissues for their runny noses, hand sanitizer to keep them healthy, Band-Aids for their scratches, and snacks for when they are hungry. We support our students by giving them of our time, such as leading after-school clubs. As a club leader myself, I have spent hundreds of dollars for materials every year of my own money and countless hours to support this program and the students that I lead with no compensation in return. This year, the county has started providing compensation for club leaders. However, this amount does not nearly cover the cost that it was for my club. We support our students as they try to learn how to control their emotions and manage their behaviors while they are in an elevated state. Our schools do not have the financial resources to hire enough staff members who specialize in behavioral and emotional support. This leads to our teachers getting burnt out by not getting the support they need to manage their classrooms appropriately. We support our students academically to give them the best chance at a bright future, a bright future that will support Caroline County by providing business leaders, bankers, teachers, mechanics, and so, so much more. Tonight, we humbly stand before you and ask you for your support. As much as we love our jobs and we love working in Caroline, it is becoming more and more difficult to support our personal families due to the lack of financial support. We are having to choose between supporting our families and supporting the future leaders of Caroline County. It is getting harder to justify working in this county when we know that surrounding counties are financially supporting their school systems and their teachers far greater than here in Caroline. We are asking that you support and collaborate with our current CCPS leadership as we strive for better and greater opportunities for not only Caroline County Public Schools, but for the entire community of Caroline. We are all here tonight supporting our future leaders of Caroline County. Mr. Chair and Board members, are you willing to match that effort and financially support us to make this community better for all their residents? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brittany Kirby, and I do not reside in Caroline. I reside in a neighboring county, and I am a teacher, proud teacher, for ten years at Lewis and Clark. I had a script.
Excuse me. You said ten years at Lewis and Clark?
I've been at Lewis and Clark for ten years. I know. I'm very short. I'm the same height as the students. Overall, I've been a teacher for twelve years. Two of those years have been in a neighboring county. Why do I stay in Caroline when I could have stayed in that other county? Yeah, that county paid a whole lot more. I stay here because of my school board. I stay here because of my administrator. I am supported. I am respected. I am heard. I wasn't heard at my other school. I wasn't heard in my other county. I've been heard here. And an example of that was last year, what started in the summer of 2020, I was given permission to pilot a program at Lewis and Clark that has now been endorsed division-wide for all elementary schools. It is a foundational program to help our students become readers and build those skills that haven't, that have needed to be taught. And now with the new Virginia Literacy Act, we, with the help of the other reading specialists, we are going to be ahead, and we are going to be ready when this act takes place in twenty-four, twenty-five. And I am proud of the work that we have done to be there. I would not have that voice in another county. But what is hard is knowing that for the first time in my educational life, I haven't been able to make ends meet. I came home to a cabinet of groceries filled because my mother knew I didn't have food. How embarrassing. I am thirty-five years old, and for the first time, I couldn't provide for myself. I have my own townhouse that I paid mortgage for. I have my own townhouse that I paid mortgage for that I had to refinance. When rates were low in twenty twenty-one, my brother looks out for me and was like, hey, rates are low, I know you make nothing. I'm gonna help you. So he helped me refinance. I've changed my cell phone provider to, from Verizon to a different one to save money. I've done things to do this on my own. I work summer school, I tutor, I do all of those things to make ends meet. I should not have to. I also have three degrees. When I started school, you had to have a bachelor's, and then they told you had to go into your fifth year to get a master's. In order to be a reading specialist, I have to have another master's. I have three degrees that I'm paying off. It's hard. I highly encourage you to work with our school board and come to some consensus for the children. I am coming for the children, and I have no money to do so. But I hope that you can do the same. Thank you.
What was your last name, Brittany?
Kirby.
Kirby, thank you. And thank you again. Next.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Arlene Calhoun Hicks. I've been the E S L specialist since two thousand thirteen. I do not reside in this county. Uh, I just want to focus on some more data that we gathered in that survey that was referred to by Ms. Williamson. The, the, the question was, the question asked, uh, the respondents if they had considered leaving C C P S for other work-related reasons besides salary. Thirty-three point three percent indicated that mounting responsibilities, as she referred to, caused them to consider leaving. Twenty-nine point three percent felt that they are spending an excessive amount of personal time on work. Combined, they make up sixty-two point six percent of the respondents. Let me just talk about the added responsibilities. I'm, I'm an E S L teacher, I'm gonna talk about how E S L has changed since two thousand nineteen. Since two thousand nineteen, the number of English learners receiving services at each school rose dramatically. Bowling Green went from twenty students to thirty-four students. Lewis and Clark went from twenty-one students to thirty-one students. Madison went from twelve students to twenty-three students. Middle school went from eleven students to nineteen students, and the high school went from ten students to twenty-six students. So in total, that went, we went from seventy-four E S L English learners to a hundred and thirty-three English learners since two thousand nineteen. There are five schools and there are three E S L teachers. Among the English learners, the proportion of Level Ones, the new speakers, also increased. So at this point, Level Ones make up twenty-four percent of the English learners at Bowling Green, twenty-three percent at Lewis and Clark, thirty-nine percent at Madison, twenty-one percent at the middle school, and thirty-one percent at the high school. Moreover, there has been a rise in the number of English learners with I E Ps and incomplete formal education. That means that there are upper elementary school students who just learned to recognize the letters in the alphabet. There are middle school students who have never used a computer. For three years, Bowling Green had a full-time E S L teacher. Because the population doubled at Madison, that teacher now serves Bowling Green and Madison. I serve Lewis and Clark and Madison, and of course, the others, uh, teachers serves the middle school and the high school. Each elementary school has an onsite E S L teacher only three days a week. How do the classroom teachers meet the needs of the, these students when the E S L teacher is not, not in the building? They spend their personal time and money finding and purchasing supplemental materials. How much time does the E S L teacher devote to each student? Thirty to forty-five minutes. When does the E S L teacher confer with the classroom teacher? Before and after school. With this in mind, the respondents were asked if they had, would, had joined or would be willing to join a educational association. And thirty-eight, uh, about forty percent said that they were willing to join a, uh, an association if the dues could be subsidized and they'd be interested in, in collective bargaining. I believe that these results reveal that many employees are open to the idea of acting work environment and compensation received. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calvin Hicks.
Good eve, good evening. I'm Faith Beasley, and I'm an eighth grader at Caroline Middle School. We have, we have improved a lot and come really far, but we still have a lot, and we have a lot more than we used to, but we can still improve. I directly see how the lack of funding affects our schools and teachers because I go to these schools and live in a home supported by a teacher of Caroline County. I think that there are a few things that we can easily improve in our county by increasing the budget and resources that they are asking for. The first thing is quality teacher retention. Teacher retention has always been an issue for our schools, especially at the middle school. This may be the most crucial school in which we need good teachers to stay. I've seen many teachers leave at Caroline Middle School, and our students have definitely been affected by it. This problem can be solved simply. If we pay good teachers what they're worth, they will stay. If we offer affordable health benefits, they will stay. If we make it so teachers don't have to work two jobs, they will also stay. We can make Caroline County schools as good, and if not better, as our surrounding counties, and our employees will stay. Number two, we need more teachers and parents to support the ever-growing needs of our students. We, lastly, we need programs and funding to support even more behavioral intervention programs. We've made a lot of progress here already, but we have room to grow. I hope that you will support our growing potential of our school and not just for mine, but future generations of Caroline County. Thank you.
Faith, before you go, you said you were an eighth grader at Caroline Middle School?
Yeah.
I know you're not supposed to ask a woman her age, but how old are you?
I'm thirteen.
Okay, we're gonna suspend the rules one more time. Any other thirteen-year-olds will do that. Back to the hand waving, yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Stewart. I'm not a resident of Caroline County, but I am an educator in Special Education Behavior Support Program, and I'm here to advocate for my fellow workers because behavior support is really becoming an issue in our large population. We do not have enough staff that is qualified to work with our students and is having a great impact. At this current time, we started a year, there were three students, and I am now up to ten students in a behavior support program, and they are all males. I am very concerned that we are not addressing the I E P and Special Education population. It is starting out in elementary, and we're not looking at it seriously enough. We're not applying enough people who are qualified to do the job, and that's making a great impact on even the day-to-day services that we are able to provide. I'm also concerned that Caroline County does not have the adequate amount of mental health support and counseling services that are needed. Unfortunately, coming out of COVID, our children who have special needs with I E Ps have a very large mental health capacity that need that service, and we need it within the schools to be able to provide them with what they need. For our male population who are at high risk, I would say that we need to do more. We need to have the funding in the elementary school that allows us to be able to actually implement the social-emotional learning aspect that actually is a law and as a part of Virginia State curriculum that is not happening on a day-to-day basis because teachers are so overwhelmed by what they already have to do and what's on their plate. And so the social-emotional learning aspect gets kicked to the curb. But when you're dealing with children who have behavior support needs, that is a very large aspect to them being successful within the general education classroom. If their behavior is not controllable and they can't stay there, then they are not receiving the information and the education to be able to move forward. And I say that because I also come from an environment where I taught Special Education within a juvenile detention center, where I had students as young as ten years old, some from the Caroline County area. I believe that if we do not implement the proper resources in our educational facilities at a young enough age, we are, in some ways, helping this situation to grow in our juvenile facilities because some of these children with I E Ps just did not receive the proper services that they needed in the elementary school level, and we waited too long. We waited because the funding wasn't there, the teachers weren't there, the resources weren't there. And this child gets older, and now they become a part of the system, and it makes it so much harder for us to help them. So I'm asking you, as a teacher in a behavior support program, where I have a high majority of African-American males, we need the resources and the money, the education, the teachers and the staff to be able to help these children so that we can help them to be productive and want them to live in. We have these kids here. The population is gonna grow. COVID has given us a different type of child, and I feel like our education system wants to function as we did before COVID, and I hate to tell you, that's not going to work. We need to address the needs of our students, and we need to come alongside our parents to also help them as well.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. George Spaulding, Bowling Green District, uh, also a school board member. Before I say anything, I'd like to applaud all you guys that got up here tonight. That's top-notch. I had, I was sitting back there thinking, I don't have a speech and I won't be up here three minutes. But, uh, you know, we moved up here from a college town, and I brought two children in here. And my concern was, I said, here we're coming from, uh, uh, area where they're exposed to all kinds of education, this sort of thing, and we're coming out to the country. And underneath, I said, uh, I was doing it for selfish part because I was gonna coach football, and I wasn't worried about my girls. But then after we got up here, I started saying, maybe this was a mistake. But was I wrong? Was I wrong? I have two ladies, so two girls. One got a scholarship to University of Tennessee. She took her chemistry workbook and notes and all down there. No, I didn't tell her to do it, and I don't know who did. But when the chemistry professor saw it, he said he'd never seen one like that in high school. They put her into an advanced class. She had a good chemistry teacher. This is my point I'm trying to make. We had these good teachers up here. My young one went to the University of South Carolina to study Spanish. When they got down there, they put her in an advanced class because the Spanish teacher she had up here was so good. So those girls, like I said, they just erased everything I thought. Because we had good teachers, and we still have good teachers. It's like you, you people know, you've heard me say this before. Teachers are free agents. They're gonna go where the money is. And this is the only thing. We've got good people here, and in order for us to keep them and to get good people, we've got to pay them. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Rollins, and I am in the Mattapinai District. I am a parent of five graduates from Caroline County Public Schools, two who came back and became educators here, one who is a state award-winning person that you'll take care of later, and I think in advance. I have four grand graduates, and the next graduate of our family is currently in kindergarten. So I'll be around for a while. You know all the facts of why we need and want and deserve the raises the school board is asking for. So I won't bore you with any of those details because I know that you know them. It would be nice to see us enter a phase of showing how well our governing boards work together to make funding the schools a priority. The staff of Caroline County Public Schools show up each day. We teach, we counsel. Some of us drive the buses, some of us cook the meals, some of us clean the overflowing toilets. Not once, not twice, but daily sometimes. We dry eyes, we hug, and we care. Question, how long would you work hoping you would get part of a proposed raise? How long do you think we can hear over and over and over the numbers and the needs followed by level funding? So, moving to solution, what does it take to move some of us from the well-diggers' big toe to at least that other area that you thought I was gonna say? What does it take to make the education of our kids here a priority? Hey, what does it take to help me buy gas and eggs? What does it take to move from level funding to seeing our elected boards work together? I would like to listen to conversations that sound like planning and working toward a common goal. I taught my children to be nice to each other. And when they entered that pre-teenage phase and they were ugly to each other, they had to go get their piggy banks and pay that person a quarter out of their piggy bank when they said something that I deemed was not language to be used in my house. Just, just a side note that I need you guys to think about bringing piggy banks to some of our meetings, okay? I would like to see the education of our children as a priority in these meetings. I would like to hear conversations that talk about how can we work toward better pay for those that provide that education? Please let your votes, or the voices of educators and community taxpayers. Please let your voices, your votes show you're willing to fund our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. And congratulations to you on your oldest daughter, I believe.
Good evening.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Melanie Brown. I live in the Reedy Church District. I am a teacher at Bowling Green Elementary School. I'm the mother of a graduate of Caroline County Public Schools, and my daughter is a senior this year. I have all these like scribble-scrabble things here on my paper and just, you know, kind of thinking about things that all the people behind me have said tonight. And I related to so many of the things that were said as far as the, the veteran teachers. We are tired. We are tired. And this is not the board that's gonna help manage, um, our responsibilities at school, but this is the board that can possibly help manage, um, who's gonna come alongside and help us. I've been teaching for twenty-seven years, and in the last, um, five years that I've been at Bowling Green, we have had to rebuild my personal team at fifth grade every single year. So that means for me, every single year, I have to teach someone else how to teach every year. This year, I think, um, one of the ladies stated that we have our, um, our colleagues that are now going to other schools, other districts, and that happened to us this year at fifth grade. Just, just fifth grade, just Bowling Green. We had two teachers who left. Both of them went to Hanover, and we couldn't replace them. So I know now that the long-term sub that's been there all year this year, um, and I've poured my heart, soul, blood, sweat, and tears into her, and she has worked her tail off, but she's just a mama of three little girls. And I know that now, next year, I will have to do the same exact thing to a whole other person because that position is not filled by a licensed professional. This is happening in all of our schools. It's just that now, at the elementary school, we're finally feeling it. It's been happening at the middle school for years and years, and the high school for years and years. It's, it's, we can't deny it. We can't, we can't overlook it any longer. We have got to make some changes, and the boards have got to work together to make some changes because, like I said, the veteran teachers are, are tired, and there's not that many of us left. They're just leaving in droves. We got two emails today giving people, giving their farewells, just at my school. So we really just are asking that you would please work together and, um, come to an agreement on ways that we can really solve this problem. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Corinne Griggs, and I reside in the Reedy Church District. I am not only a resident of Caroline County, but I am also the proud principal of Caroline Middle School, hence my blue and gold attire, and the mother of two Bowling Green Elementary Huskies, both of which were taught by a teacher sitting in this very room. Probably not gonna say much that hasn't already been said tonight, but this is definitely a topic that is worth repeating. Maintaining these three roles, needless to say, it was difficult to tease out one single budget priority to speak to and advocate for tonight. However, it is easy to see that C C P S has prioritized items that will have the biggest impact on our students. And I have the pleasure of witnessing all of these stories firsthand in real time. One thing I think that we can all agree is that education is the most important thing, and some would even say the centerpiece of a community. Our schools are a huge resource that provide connections for our families that they rely on for their children to be successful. And I'm not just talking about the instruction that happens in classes. Also, we can agree that education is a complex entity with many moving parts, that there is not one single request that can remedy that. So reducing our priorities further than we already have is not an acceptable option. A large portion of the requests lie in employee compensation and benefits for all of our staff. These items are necessary in order to increase retention and to compete with neighboring divisions. That's been mentioned several times. As you know, the salary study also showed that we ranked 16th out of 17 and that's second to last, just putting that a different way. Resulting in Caroline being often overlooked when qualified employees are considering applying for our vacancies. Attracting highly qualified employees yields a stronger content knowledge and expertise in our classrooms for our students. When teachers are adequately compensated, they are more likely to remain in our division, creating less turnover, decreasing the need for repetitive and time consuming trainings and common understanding of expectation, which in turn allows for more traction for our initiatives that we've started and interventions as they pertain to behavior and importantly, our achievement. While compensation seems to focus on the staff, imagine the benefits that compensation can have for students as our vacancies remain filled and our teachers return year after year. Next, additional staffing to address the post pandemic social emotional needs of our students and attend to the required services for our increasing population of students with disabilities is a must. Schools nationwide have seen increased in trauma and negative student behaviors, which requires the additional trained and specialized personnel to provide the needed interventions and resources for these students to navigate the structures of the school environment. Additionally, as our numbers of students with disabilities grow by 108 students since December of 2022, we continue to, we need to continue to staff this department adequately to meet the standards of quality. Instructional assistants and one special education teacher are the bare minimum needed to address this data. Finally, we are not requesting bells and whistles or the latest flashy educational trend. Our priorities continue to lie in the needs, not the wants of our students and staff. When considering the modest list of priorities to simply operate by compensating our staff the way they should be, provide resources and interventions to the schools as they become responsible for new things for our students, meet standards of quality and continue to sustain programs and services in an ever The board must reconsider the proposed budget for local funding. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Thomas, Vice Chair Seeley, members of the board. My name is Karen Foster. I'm the Director of Human Resources for Caroline County Schools. I'm not a resident yet. Tonight I come before you to advocate for our amazing and dedicated staff, our students and families. I will not highlight again where we stand in comparison to our local competitors. You've heard me present that the past two budget cycles, but rather provide you with a few facts from this year. This school year was the first time in several years that we were unable to fully staff our elementary schools with licensed teachers or those who are eligible for licensure. Currently, we have 10 long term substitutes or temporary teachers employed to serve in the role of teacher at our three elementary schools. This impacts approximately 250 students. At our middle school, we have three long term substitute teachers employed serving in the role of teacher, impacting approximately 336 students or about one third of the student population at our middle school. At Caroline High School, we have four positions filled by long term subs or daily subs as well as temporary teachers. This impacts approximately 600 students. Caroline High School has also been without one school counselor this year due to the increased need for counselors in the Commonwealth, the lack of qualified applicants or the applicants who have declined our offers due to pay, impacting approximately 300 students. Lotus Academy has one long term substitute serving in the role of teacher, supporting some of the students in our county that need the most to be successful in learning and life. We have 10 maintenance and custodial positions that we have been unable to fill due to pay and 13 bus driving positions. These vacancies directly impact our 4,200 students and 700 staff within our division. A neighboring school division actively recruited and hired staff from our finance department, impacting our operations for six months while we tried to hire for the positions that we made offers to, but they were not accepted due to compensation. As I follow other school divisions' proposed budgets, I am concerned about the lack of urgency that has been displayed by the board by the lack of acknowledgement or communication of support for all of our 700 employees as our school board has presented a requested budget that brings all employee groups to the market value 50th percentile or middle of the market. I'm concerned that there is a national teacher shortage and shortage of other skilled workers and that our number of unfilled positions or positions filled with workers who do not have credentials will yet continue to grow. I am concerned when I hear a staff member.
Would you summarize, Ms. Foster?
Absolutely. Currently, our staff deserves better, our students deserves better and our community deserves better. Thank you for your time. I appreciate you.
Good evening again. I'm still Paige Carter and I still live in the Mattupena District. Now I would like to speak to you regarding my annual speech, the budget. An increase in 8.89% for the county budget should constitute at least a proportionate share for the school division. As you know, the school has identified a people over things approach. You know this because it's been presented to you on multiple occasions and at many public events. I hope you had the opportunity to attend one of those where questions could be asked and answers received. I accidentally attended one at my favorite Bowling Green establishment, the Mix House. But I did not see you there, Mr. Seeley. I hope you had an opportunity to attend another one. Part of this people first approach is to level the playing field with staff salaries to attract qualified applicants from a shrinking pool of professionals to teach and support our most valuable resource, our children. Public school leaders are in a competition that cannot be explained to you unless you are living it. When Mr. Spalding said they're free agents, they are. In the school division where I'm, where I work now, collective bargaining is happening. It happened in a neighboring school division already. The playing field is changing and you need to get in front of it. We have something many school divisions don't though. A committed school board and a superintendent and team of administrators, teachers and staff that work tirelessly, tirelessly for kids, something of which I am very grateful for. You don't hear talk of working to the contract or I'll do that, but you'll have to pay me extra, which is common in my new division. They just do what's right for kids. Their people are their priority, students and staff. That gives us Caroline an edge when it comes to retention, but it doesn't help with recruitment and it won't hold when you can work closer to where you live and make $10,000 or even $20,000 more. Mr. Thomas, I heard you ask why you would live somewhere that was more expensive than here on a meeting that I listened to on the way here, that how many of our teachers live in Caroline? And I don't remember what the percentage was, but something like 60% of our staff don't live here. They can't afford to live here. I know this, I have grown children who want to live in Caroline, but they can't. For years, you have level funded the school system or given only what you were required to make the state match. I am, I have a PhD, but not in accounting. But it seems that an 8.89% increase for the county and a 3.83 total decrease, including operational budget, CIP and debt service, doesn't matter. Operations budget increased by 5%? I'll summarize. To use your words, Mr. Thomas, the board cares desperately for the 740. If that is the case, I want, and I want to believe that it is, it's time to put our money where your mouth is and fully fund the school division. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hi, good evening. I am Rachel Wheeler. I am a proud employee of CCPS. I'm also a former resident of Caroline County, pre my interest in education. I would like to point out, sometimes things in life come full circle. Unfortunately, while I was a resident in Caroline, most of my neighbors that had children sent them to private school or homeschooled them and didn't rely on our local school system. Now that I am an employee of the county, it's, it's interesting that some of that circle has not changed. I know change is a scary word for a lot of people, but I feel that you, as a board, are in a unique situation where you're still developing a budget. And so I would ask you to relook at what you're allocating for the schools. I would ask you to look at the total number of funding. It's more than compensation for teachers. It's providing more support for your students that hopefully will continue to make your county grow and flourish and want people, for people to want to come here, excuse me. I also just want to point out that the students we have are different. Their needs are different. There's a much higher level of student behavior and social emotional concerns that we're addressing. And yes, while we do need the salaries to increase so we can retain solid staff, we also need more staff and in specialized areas to help us with the new age of students that we are trying to grow to be model citizens for Caroline County itself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are y'all?
Very well.
I'm not going to take a lot of time at all because you have heard everything. My name is Sandra Gilliam. I am not a resident of Caroline, but I love everyone in it, in Caroline. But I just wanted to say thank you for listening to our wants and needs for our students, teachers, parents, staff, bus drivers, custodians and administration. I love everything about Caroline. I used to be at Lewis and Clark during the pandemic year of 2020. I was with Brittany Kirby. We were both reading specials together at Lewis and Clark. And to hear her come up here and pour her heart out the way she did about what's going on with her, took a lot for her to do that. Because I know her personally, that took a lot for her to come in. So, and she gives everything to the students at Lewis and Clark. I was fortunate enough to get the admin intern position at the middle school and move up there and also teach sixth grade English. So I have the admin hat, but I also have my English degree. And I have a parent who's here now also, so I have her students, her, her child. Well, they're really mine, so just put it. I, like I said, I love the kids at Caroline Middle. They are a wonderful group of people. The teachers really do go beyond of what is expected of them. And the holes that we do have in our school is no fault of our own, like they, like everyone said before. It's because people are looking at the dollar and it's because eggs and milk are high and everybody wants to eat. But I also represent going out to the career fairs for Caroline. So like tomorrow I'll be at Howard University trying to get to highly qualified teachers
That's my turn.
to come to our county. And what do I say to them? I say to them what made me come to the county. If you love a rural area, you want your grassroots, you need a good foundation, this is the place to be. Because the people that are here from Dr. Kevarek, who amazed me when I went in the first time for my teacher work week and she knew who I was. She's called me by my first and last name. Who does that during teacher work week? I trust her beyond the moon and back. If she's asking you for something, believe me, it's something that's good for us, but it's also good for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Think we have one more?
Good evening, Chair Mr. Thomas and Vice Chair Mr. Seeley and the rest of the board. I didn't plan to speak tonight, so I'm going to try to organize my thoughts the best I can here. I am Jeff Wick. I am in the Bowling Green District. And I have lived in Bowling Green for 24 years. I moved here from Pennsylvania 24 years ago. So I'm going to come here, though I think if there's a possibility to change to a from here, and I don't think there is, but I'm about as close as you can get to that. And I'm going to say that over 24 years, I've built many wonderful relationships with the students and parents of this county as well as staff, even some students who have become parents. I don't necessarily speak tonight as a, as an employee, but as a citizen. As I said, I've lived here 24 years. And as a citizen of the county, I would like our students to have the best education they can have to prepare them for the future, to reward their parents with this high quality education and the staff members from teachers to bus drivers to nutrition services, et cetera, the best staff we can have to provide that service that our students need. Times have changed. It's more challenging now than it was even three years ago. We have inflation. We have about a 40% reduction in new teacher candidates. We have new expenses such as technology and security items and things like this that we need to be funded. It's hard to compete in this environment. So my goal is we want to provide the best facilities, the best resources, the best teachers, transportation, everything associated with the school system. So we're going to do a quick illustration to determine why we're here and I'd like for you guys to join me in this. And I do want to say I appreciate your attention to all these speakers tonight. You guys have done a great job with that and I also appreciate your tough job that you have. But if, if, if the table that your hands rest are the minimum amount of money that a school district has to spend on education as required by the state, let's just say that's the minimum. And if we raise our hands, say up to my head here and say that's a range that a school division can spend on education, I would argue that up here is a little bit excessive. But if I put my hands on the table and I take my right hand and I touch the top of my left hand, that's about the level that this board of supervisors has spent above the minimum since at least 2007, at least. And those chickens are coming home to roost now. We can no longer spend that much above the minimum. We need to be willing to spend more to support the students, the parents and the staff. So my suggestion is, if I were to raise my hands, I'd raise them to about chest level, between chest and chin, let us get above the minimum, provide the resources we need, whether it's staffing, whether it's educational resources, technology, transportation, facilities and maintenance, so we can give the education that our kids can deserve to be positive contributors to society, the education the parents want for their children and the education our staff and all staff in whatever realm they serve to provide a high level of excellence to the students of Caroline County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wick. Dr. Rollins Fels. No sarcasm intended, but of course we save the best for last.
Thank you so much. I heard the sighs and the laugh. I promise to stay within my time limit. I'm going to ask for a reset. Reclaim my time.
You, we'll start you all over, but I know you're a Baptist minister, so saying I'm only going to be here for a short time. Let me go get some lunch and I'll be right back. Paige, I've known Dr. Rollins Fels since she was a lot younger. We have a special relationship. There is no sarcasm intended. We are very good friends. I'm, as the school people will tell you, everybody should always be in the mode to improve. So I'm in the mode to improve and make sure. Three minutes. Dr. Rollins Fels, if you will begin.
Thank you. From the Reedy Church District, first of all, I want to say thank you to all of the people who are sitting behind me. Thank you for your bravery in finding your voice, sharing your voice and declaring that your voice is important. I want to also say thank you to the families of these teachers. We know that you are the true champions. How do I know? Because I taught for 15 years and I am still serving in education. I know the sacrifices that my daughter made as I was a single parent working on a teacher's salary. The second thing that I want to talk about this evening is that all board members are here. And I sat in the corner, not with pre-prepared marks, but with a pen and pencil to hear you. What was powerful was the speaker said that it's about fact and not about fault. And the fact is that 93% of our staff reported in that isolated survey that they have a second job. 100% said that they knew that they could get another job. 50% lived out of the county and 5% felt that this, the statistic was that 5% of those numbers leaving us would be detrimental. It's time for some real talk. Mr. Wick said some roosters have come home to crow. There are questions that we have discussed at our joint board meetings, at least the last eight.
There are questions that we have discussed at our joint board meetings, at least the last eight years that I have been on the board. And it is important that the people behind us speak. I sat over there with mixed emotions. And I'm trying not to be Minister Fells, but I can't turn that off. It is my hope that the spirit of offense that has existed for whatever reason that we continue to talk about is broken with the humility of the people in this room. I'm gonna speak to you as a leader and I'm gonna say this in my last 55 seconds. The requests that we have made are anchored in our strategic plan. And we have been advocates to be a part of the county strategic plan. I sat there and I looked up at the wall at 2009 when Caroline County was an All-American citizen. And when my mom got up here and talks about us having to pay quarters for disrespect. One thing that happened about COVID is that these meetings are no longer private. It's no longer the six faces that come and sit in auditorium. YouTube has taught us that people are watching and they are listening. And it is embarrassing when we don't do our very best. So I will leave you with this. Coming together is the beginning. Keeping together is progress. Working together is success. If we still point to 2009 and we do great things that we've done in the past, we are failing. There's always light if we're only brave enough to see it, if we're only brave enough to be it. And as an elected official, I hold myself accountable, the rest of my board and you. It's election year. Before you declare your candidacy and start signing petitions, if we're not gonna do it right, don't do it at all. That's myself included. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins Fells. Um, seeing no one else in line, is there anyone else? We would declare the public hearing to be closed. Um, first of all, thank you all for all who came out and expressed your opinion. We do appreciate it. Uh, I believe all of us were moved by many of the comments made. The board will take a quick 10-minute break to allow those of you who'd like to leave to leave. Uh, but we'll be back in about 10 minutes. So thank you, we'll stand adjourned.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we will reconvene. Our next agenda item is the proposed 2024-2028 capital improvement CIP. Yeah, pass, yeah, just pass those out. Mr. Cowley?
Yes, sir, Mr.
CIP public hearing?
Lights. All right, this is the.
Yep. Take one of the stats of them.
Information on the proposed CIP, uh, 24 to 29. Um, obviously we've got the 24 numbers that I've recommended in this. You've already sort of seen in the other PowerPoint, but this is the specific public hearing for the CIP. The total request for infrastructure for the five-year CIP is $106,843,000. The total infrastructure recommended for the, uh, isn't it for the, not one year, but five years, is $55,244,000. The total 24 infrastructure request was $44,069,000. And the total 24 infrastructure recommended was $751,766,000. Total request for equipment and transportation, um, for the five-year CIP was $11,810,196,000. The total county administrator equipment and, uh, uh, transportation recommended was $9,362,703,000. And that's five-year number. And the 24 equipment request was $3,173,899,000. And the total, uh, that I recommended was $1,810,505,000. So you see I had to pare those back and that goes back to our ability to borrow funds, um, in this year and some outline years till 27 as, uh, according Rogers had indicated last year. The vehicles and we propose for vehicles and equipment of the county, sheriff, police vehicles, $518,928 financed. I'd really hope to start being able to pay for those, but I haven't quite had the money like I did the buses. Public Works roll-off truck, um, 100,000 and there's partial, uh, reserve money in the general fund to save money that we're gonna bounce against that because those trucks are now over $200,000. Um, I got this one twice, sheriff's vehicles financed, uh, 518, and fire and rescue vehicles, uh, 455,000. And all those that are still financed, those are leases, so they're not really long-term debt. They're more short-term debt. Some of the fire vehicles are out to 10 years, but most of those, uh, police vehicles are four years. Um, and then of those, fire rescue is brushed five, 140,000. And I think you bought that chassis to that or at least authorized that off of that, uh, other contract the other night. And Amalance 12, which, uh, as I mentioned the other night, Amalances have gone from when I got here to about 150 to $315,000. Infrastructure, we have a replacement of a roof here. Um, Joey would have to tell you what part. We've already worked on parts of the roof. This may be the health department, but I've lost track of where we worked. I know we put a new one on the gym last year. I remember seeing him do it. That's $151,766,000 and that's, uh, CDF funds. Um, and then water supply, uh, well development 600. And that's out of that reserve revenue, uh, account we created for water. So that's where I would propose to fund that, well, well development, you know, what, what we need for water. Um, so the county and utility CIP fund and general fund reserve, 100,000, transferred from the CDF fund to 151, uh, $766,000 and lease purchase 973,928. Um, and then the transfer from reserves of 600. So that's how I propose to fund the county side of, uh, of the CIP and utilities. Total revenue, um, 1,825,694 with about half of that being financed. For the school CIP, the classroom technology I mentioned earlier, or 50,000 is a CDF transfer. Two special needs buses, 258,406, general fund transfer that we do every year. And then three regular buses for $378,171,000. That's also general fund transfer that we do every year. That's about, as you saw earlier, about 56,000 more than last year. Uh, and that's just basically cost of buses have gone sky-high like everything else. There's a maintenance and student transport vehicle, $50,000. And that's transferred from the CDF fund, that's cash from CDFN. And, um, their subtotalist vehicles and equipment, $736,577,000. And that's transferred from the general fund to the school CIP of $636,577,000. And transferring from Caroline to. And transferring from Caroline detention facility funds to school C I P of a hundred thousand dollars. Total revenue to school C I P, seven hundred and thirty six thousand, five seventy seven, and that includes no lease or borrowed funds. Special thanks to Mike Fincham, director planning, for his and Lisa's act from planning that put the C I P, you know, initially together, and Tamika and Alan for helping with getting that into the budget and getting it into the PowerPoint and into the budget message for this year, so questions?
All right, thank you, sir. At this point, we will open the public hearing for the C I P. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this? Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding the C I P? Anyone who'd like to speak regarding the C I P? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Board members have questions or comments for Mister Colley?
No questions.
I do, Mr. Thomas. Mister Colley, in the C I P, how much money are we looking to invest in our park and recreation department?
I don't think we had any money scheduled for this year, those are in some of the outline years.
And my reason for asking, Mister Colley, why are you looking for that, for board members, is quite selfish, is that there are certain parts of the county where there are no park facilities for our children. And as many, you know, I've been working with the group, and I'm going to bring something before you later on, but I think it's crucial that we I look at the park over at the high school, and that park now is a premium park with nice playground, nice bathroom, nice facilities. And that's really the only park in the county. If there's an activity and people come to the school for that, I think we need to invest some money in our parks and recreation department. Invest and have a plan to increase our facilities within the county. Because I don't, I just don't think it's something that all residents can use, they belong to the park, and I just think it's it would do the county well to invest some funds in the park and recreation, that's why I asked, Mister Colley.
Yeah, for twenty four, we don't really have anything, and of course, we didn't have really anything for Dawn Mini Park, because we weren't sure exactly where we were going with that when this was put together. But I do have fifty thousand in there for twenty four, twenty five for that mini park. But overall, for twenty four, twenty five, we hope to have, you know, a million dollars to do lighting and those type of things, so there could be more money added in for a Dawn Mini Park, but as we develop the C I P for next year.
And I'm just not looking just at Dawn.
Oh, no, but it's for all the other. Yeah, that's for other, other.
Specifically, yes, yeah, okay, thank you. All right, Mister Colley, before you go, I know there's one thing, the, the school technology, fifty thousand, that's supposed to be for refreshing teacher computers.
Correct.
And I'm not sure what we did in that the year before, but I guess.
Fifty, I think we've been doing fifty, I'd have to, that's a Tamika question, if she remembers. I've been only paying for that out of C D F funds every year.
Yeah, as, as we get to discuss the C I P, maybe we can look at the possibility to increase in that sum, I know the refresh is really important to the schools.
Yeah, that, that was the priority eight, they had technology, classroom technology, seventy five thousand, I didn't have a way of funding that. Then that was seventy five, that we normally, you know, we moved it, hoped to fund it next year in years in the future. That was the thirteenth priority, and I think that included some other UPS replacements and some things that make up in that seventy five thousand.
All right, we're going to look at that, you know, as we get into C I P. All right, thank you, sir.
All right, Mister Colley, the, the funding from the, the sale, the old the old rescue squad building.
Yeah, we have that in a reserve account.
That's in the reserve account, so that's waiting for a project and.
We, we.
You're marked mostly down southern, southern part of the county.
I would assume it'd be down that way, and we thought maybe, we have some building needs at Company Five, and the chief's looking at structural, some structural things and things, so we, you know, maybe between the park and that building, we'll be able to use that money. I mean, our park ultimately would take more than what that.
Sure.
Has, but those are the two projects in that it came sort of from the rescue squad, and we do run rescue out of Company Five. We thought it was a good look at, you know, we have some, I can't really explain them, but, you know, we'll be coming forward next, next meeting with those if you want, unless you want to know now, but it.
No, I just, just wanted, my recollection is it was set aside, so.
It is, it's in a reserve account. It's not in the general fund balance.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Mister Fincham? It's time, or is it, is it Mister Fincham, or? No, we're going to go through those during our budget work sessions.
Mister Chairman, members of the board, your next public hearing is an ordinance to repeal and replace chapter forty five of the county code, which are the revisions of the flood hazard regulations. As we previously discussed briefly, the Federal Emergency Management Agency has updated the flood insurance rate maps for the county. And the county has been a participant in the federal flood insurance rate program ever since nineteen eighties. Periodically FEMA updates the maps, and in order to continue participation in the flood program, the county goes through the process and updates or approves the update to the FEMA maps, as well as to the county's floodplain regulations. The FEMA maps, this go around, had some, some additional or some interesting updates to the flood elevations, principally from the change in the reference datum from the nineteen twenty nine datum to the nineteen eighty three datum, which they adopted in all the flood insurance programs. And this change and some additional modeling resulted in a number of changes to the floodplains' boundaries in the county. The good news and bad news in that there were approximately, I believe the number was twelve hundred lots, that were affected in some manner by the modified flood boundaries. But there were approximately nine hundred lots that were actually removed from the floodplain designation of, of one of the different categories that FEMA identifies. I would also note that with the, with the updated floodplain, some smaller streams and tributaries that previously were not identified as having a potential flood hazard were identified, this go around based upon the elevation modifications. Those did not necessarily translate into those properties being included in a hundred year floodplain. As far as the process, FEMA notifies property owners that are affected by the change in boundaries in a hundred year floodplain, that was done, and any letters of map amendment that need to be modified, those notices have gone out as well. With that, I'll answer any questions the board may have, the board was provided a couple of maps after your last meeting for your reference. We are cleaning those up a little bit more, and we'll be putting those online once we finish the cleanup, so that the board can, or public can see those maps to go with the ordinance. With that, I'll address any questions the board may have.
Any questions for Mister Fincham, I don't think we have much choice, but thank you, Mister Fincham. I'm going to open the public hearing, if you'll stay right there for a second, I think we'll be right back. A public hearing for the ordinance to amend the Code of Caroline by repealing and replacing chapter forty five of the flood hazard regulations is open. Anyone like to speak regarding this matter? Anyone like to speak regarding this matter? Hearing none, the public hearing is declared closed, motion to adopt will be in order. Motion made by Mister Black, seconded by Mister Forehand, discussion on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, the motion carries unanimously, thank you, Mister Fincham, excellent job. Agenda item number eight is Chief Loftus, I think that's it for you, Mister Fincham. Fire and rescue career employee referral compensation program.
Mister Chairman, members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
In order to stem the flow, or slow our attrition rate and find the best candidates for positions in fire rescue, we realize that our own employees, both career and volunteer, are the best recruiters that we can find, right? So if you can find a friend that's in our department and he solicits you to come to the department, we realize that's going to be our best recruitment effort to get you in the door and to keep you in the door. So before you tonight, you have a referral program that we're proposing for your consideration that would compensate folks, both career and volunteer, if they could find an employee willing to go through the hiring process, get hired, go through the training academy, come out of the training academy and work a full year, eighteen months in total, they would receive a compensation for that selection or that recruitment for us. We feel this is probably the best effort, best money spent trying to find somebody versus an ad campaign, billboards, or anything else, if we can get our own members to go out and seek new employees for us as well. So with that, the program would be a total of a thousand dollars, paid to an individual in two lumps. One would be two hundred dollars after a new employee is brought onto the department and has worked three months in good standing. And then the last eight hundred dollars of that would be in total eighteen months later, when that employee is fully released on the street. Because of our high attrition rate, finding folks that are already trained or already in the service is what we're trying to do. When we can't find those, we try to find folks that are good citizens and smart kids that really want to come into this career, and really, we need people to go out and do that. Even if we have a career fair or go to the schools, it's hard to find somebody, but if you know someone and they're talking to you about the job, we think that's going to be our best take on getting people in the door. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Miss, our Chief Loftus?
Do you think it's a thousand is enough?
I, I think it's a good start, yes, sir.
Where's your mic on?
It is. He heard me.
I did. Okay, Chief, do you have an amount of money that's going to be in this pot?
I, I would say we would start off with ten thousand in the pot.
Okay, now, now, the, the eight hundred dollars is a year and a half away, so it's the fiscal year after this one.
Correct, and it's only during times when we have a recruitment effort, right? And again, you, you have to do some work as a member to bring somebody in, there's a process, a form you got to fill out, et cetera, so. You know, it's, it's a pilot program, we've had other pilot programs in the county for, if you came up with a good idea that saved the county money, you get a thousand dollars. How many people take advantage of that, I don't know, just like that program, I don't know a lot of people realize that or utilize that. So I, I would say we could absorb these pieces in the budget, and once we can't, then we would come back to you for something, but I think this is something we could certainly absorb.
But if you're coming back, that's probably a good thing.
Absolutely.
Mister Black?
Are you still doing the volunteer compensation?
The program's there, no one's taking advantage of it.
Are we, are you reminding people that the program's there and continue, you know, like?
Yes.
Consistent emails, how you look.
So, no, when you come in the door, that's part of your orientation, you have to sign up for that program or not. So that, that information is being presented to anybody coming into the department today on the volunteer side.
Okay.
In their onboarding process.
Mister Loane?
Chief, you said it would only be used during times when you're, you're looking. Wouldn't you take somebody into the program anytime you had someone available that was interested? Are you saying you would just do it during recruiting period?
We, we would have to have some openings for this to actually work, so they would, you know, we'd have to be hiring somebody or replacing a vacancy, and somebody would have to go out and find, hey, I got this person that's interested.
You're not talking like a, a, a public drive for people, would you say recruiting, just meaning you're, you have space to hire?
That's correct.
Okay.
Right, we'll still do the public drives, we'll still be in the schools to do the things that we're normally doing, and those folks that do that would not be eligible, right? I would not be eligible or the recruiter, but I'm looking for members of our department to, to say, hey, this is a great place to work, and it could be a volunteer or a career member, doesn't matter.
So you could do it anytime you have a spot to fill, that's just what I wanted to get clear, thank you.
Well, thank you, Chief, board wishes to go ahead with this program, a motion would be in order. So move, Mister Chairman.
I'll second.
Motion's made by Mister Underwood, seconded by Mister Forehand to begin the employee referral compensation program for fire and rescue. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, the motion carries unanimously, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item number ten, we covered nine, item number ten is the VDOT secondary six year plan. We're pretty much going to have a public hearing on the six year plan next month, so anything we need to add here, Mister Fincham?
Mister Chairman, this is simply the opportunity to, for the board to look at what has been proposed by VDOT in the way of the six year plan. And to note that a project that the board requested to be included last year was subsequently determined not to qualify for the pave and place program. And then it did not meet the minimum traffic counts. Those, those road projects require a traffic count of at least fifty vehicles per day.
Mister Fincham, or Mister Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. If we have potential economic development down a rural, currently rural road, that's eight to ten years out, would it be something that we would put on the six year plan for now?
We actually had that discussion today in relation to a project. I think the short answer is, is probably not, we should look to at other funding sources such as revenue sharing. Or depending on the, the size and dollar amount of the project, perhaps a smart scale project. But we probably could not save enough money to, to collectively to apply towards a, a road improvement for an industrial project.
Okay.
There are funding sources available, Mister Wilson, whenever we have a new project, looks to the state for industrial access road funds. We, we have been approved for, for some of those funds.
One of those Drybridge.
Luther Glen Road, this go round, but certainly Drybridge is one that, that we can look at as well for, for new projects.
Yeah, that, that, that's, that access off of Drybridge for that facility is only going to get untenable very, very quickly.
Yes, sir, and we did discuss today the possibility of VDOT assisting us. And again, Mister Wilson identified a, a potential funding source from the State Economic Development Office to actually study, do transportation improvement studies for both Drybridge Road and Luther Glen Road, to come up with an overall plan of improvements that, that could be phased over time.
Okay. All right, just didn't want the, two separate things, so I, I appreciate it, but the more pressing at this point, I guess, is Drybridge and Luther Glen Road, so.
Yes, sir.
We can just push that ball, get it rolling.
Yes, sir.
All right, if there's no further more, Mister Fincham, thank you, I guess we'll move ahead to the public hearing next month.
Yes, sir.
Oh, you've also got the first reading.
The last item, I believe, is the, hopefully the last first reading of our Chesapeake Bay ordinance amendments. We, we thought we had taken care of everything, the last go round, and our friends in Richmond identified a couple of other changes that they asked us to make. So in the spirit of cooperation, we prepared those amendments. So in the spirit of cooperation, we, uh, prepared those amendments, uh, and the planning commission forwarded those to the board with a recommendation of approval. I think there were two actual changes to, uh, processes and approval authorities and for, um, additional definitions or modifications that, uh, that the state asked us to change. So we've, we've complied with that.
So it was the ones in blue, the new changes?
Yes, sir.
Were just the general changes?
Those were the new changes.
I, I just found some of them interesting with, uh, with erosion when water runs off cultivated top soils on sloping ground.
Yes, I understand.
Sounds kind of familiar.
So our request would be for the board to authorize public hearing.
I think that would be appropriate.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
It's a second. Motion made by Mr. Sealy and seconded by Mr. Underwood that we move ahead with public hearing. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Underwood just gave us, uh, a real estate purchase agreement we got from the Don Progressive Association. Jeff, did you give one and did you pass it around?
I passed him down.
Oh, okay. And this agreement is the Don Progressive Association basically returning the building back to the county. Uh, we're giving Mr. Cully and, uh, Mr. McKenzie a chance to review the arrangement and sign it if it's okay. Uh, they were just wanting to move as quickly as possible. You want to, excuse me?
Ben Emerson prepared that document. So all the, all the negotiations have been handled, handled by, uh, Sands Anderson. I think the one thing is, it had been drafted in tw- in, uh, twenty-two, so the chairman's name on it is Mr. Underwood. Then it said, if you wanted to adopt tonight, you can just scratch through that and, and put your name as chair or authorize Mr. Underwood to sign it. It just took longer to get them to agree. I mean, uh, Mr. Underwood can tell you, we've been probably working on this, what, six So those documents went to them a long time ago and I got it tonight about eight, maybe eight-thirty from Ben who got it from their lawyer.
Okay. I don't, um, I don't see Mr. Underwood's name here, but.
I was, from the email I got from Ben, I mean, from Ben, so I hadn't, I, I asked, uh, the chief to print it and you got it hot off the press.
Oh, yeah. Okay, it, it wasn't under the thing, okay.
So that would be the only real correction is you have to be on the chair, so that, that.
If the board wants to go ahead with this now, um, I don't see any problem. So a motion would be in order to go ahead and.
Well, I just, I'm, I'm reading it and I don't like F because it doesn't have a, uh, a clause in it that allows it to be extended. Uh, yeah, two F.
No special assessment?
No, the city has their, their actually bond with the pre-respond.
Yep.
Challenging the reversion, if the buyer does stop building new community building on the property within five years after close.
For us, when we looked at that, we felt that, given the, uh, the shape of the current building, which, uh, Mr. Whitman condemned, we, you know, we moved out of it years ago and they haven't had the wherewithal to, you know, maintain it and, um, the windows are knocked out and the doors, not even secure at the moment, that if over the five-year life, we could, you know, even if we didn't build anything back, but we were able to get rid of that, we would have improved the property. We were able to put a walking track in and improve the park, even if the board didn't have the money to, to put the building back up and we gave the land back.
Mr. Cully.
We really, we didn't feel like it was a negative, if you follow what I'm saying.
Okay, yep. I bet I can see. I was just looking at it from a.
We won't build a building on it unless we, you know.
But it's, but it says, if the buyer does not build.
Correct.
A new community building on the property, that puts us in a bind.
Worst case scenario, the building will be gone. The blight, the blight would be gone.
Correct. We would clear, cleared up a problem.
We will have paid for the building to be torn down.
Correct.
And there'll be nothing there and it goes back to them.
It's grass and park, which we're maintaining now.
Okay, that makes sense.
But cleaning up a blight, is that the same thing as building a new building?
Correct. It would revert. It would revert. If in five years, all we do is tear the building down and don't put up a new community building that we've got a semi-designed for because we can't afford to, for whatever reason the board chooses not to, it would revert. What I'm saying, when we looked at that provision, we didn't see that as a negative because we would have eliminated the building that has been deteriorating for as long as I can remember, way before I came to work here. It's been, and it's gotten way worse since we moved completely out of it. It's been no main, it's the roofs, you know, it's mold, the roof's caving in.
So it's a way of cleaning up somebody's neglect and.
And they don't have the wherewithal to do it. They just are not going to get it done. So it'll continue to, you know, sort of rot down.
And then we give it back to them after we clean it up, we don't build something.
If we don't have the money to build a, a building down, that'd be nice that, I mean, we feel like building a building there is a real positive. We don't believe that right now the Don Library is real conducive to voting and that the room there is pretty small. So to have another community building there that we could then take voting back to, I think would be a benefit, much less than just having the, the space down there for, uh, community use parks and rec and all those kinds of things. But we got to have the money to do it. And I don't know that we're going to have the money in five years. I don't know that we won't have the money in five years. But like I said, from a, from staff's perspective and working with Ben, because he originally put up a flag to that too. And I said, well, if we can eliminate the building, we'll have improved the property and improved it for the community. And maybe they would renegotiate if we could say, hey, we think we're gonna, we're gonna do it, you know, just ask for an extension. We've got plans, we plan to do it two years from now, I mean.
Worst case scenario is it.
Right.
In five years, the building's still gone.
Correct.
For me, for me, guys, it was that we couldn't spend the money to take the building down. If we could have taken the money down and they owned the property, that was our first suggestion. But legally, we can't spend the county money in that building. And since that money came from the Frog Level, uh, Rescue Squad sale, the only way we could get rid of that and begin to make it something other than an eyesore was for us to own the property. And so they wanted to see progress. And this way, we know that we can see progress immediately. The, the storm blew the pavilion down, so we have insurance money also to put in a new pavilion there that was back in the woods. So we have an opportunity between the insurance money and the sale of the Don Frog Level Rescue Squad to make that corner something very nice. Not saying we're going to do it tomorrow, next year or the year after, but this is a start to putting something there that's more than an eyesore, probably across one of the largest, um, African-American, uh, congregations and churches in, in my district. So I think it's a win-win for the community, a win-win for everybody there if we can move forward with the project.
And Mr. Cully, um, Prince George built a similar building beside this Patana Volunteer Fire Department on four sixty. It's two thousand a square feet.
Yeah, we have a rough draw.
Probably been twenty years ago.
And we have a rough draw and kind of mapped out of what we would like to put there with a main large room and some smaller rooms.
Yeah, they did bingo and it had a kitchen.
Right, kitchen. You think, put back sort of what they had, but in, you know, and then, uh, connect the parking lots, put, you know, pave the parking lots, put a walking trail all the way around the property, rearrange the baseball field so it's not hitting, uh, out of the convenience site, you know, the wrong way and this type of things. There's some, some, uh, general plans that we, we put together that, um, we'd like to work on as, as money allows.
Okay.
Want to move forward? Motion? I'll make a motion. Second?
I'm second.
Okay, motion's made by Mr. Sealy, uh, by Mr. Underwood, seconded by Mr. Sealy to move forward with the, uh, real estate purchase agreement for the.
Ten dollars.
What was the Don Progressive Association building? Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Oh, yeah. Who you, who signing? Who are you authorizing to sign?
Um, I was actually, I actually scratched his name out on mine and I was going to sign it.
That's who you signed.
But I think Pam has to witness me signing because it's supposed to be notarized. So I'll go over there.
Here, just take my copy and do, and do another one.
Oh, like.
I think just do it in front of them. I haven't signed it yet.
Oh, yeah, for ten dollars, yeah, it was a transfer of ten dollars or something.
Oh, the cost was ten dollars?
You gotta give her ten dollars, you.
You gotta give.
No, you sign it, you give.
Chairman gives a ten.
You're the chairman, yeah. I just did the negotiating.
As they say, you can't get blood from a stone. All right, so we, uh, we said that, I'll make sure Pam signs this or sees me sign it. And we will go to the last item on our agenda, which is the calendar and projects.
Yes, we've included, uh, the status of capital projects. Um, looking through them, I don't see anything that's majorly changed. The things we've started on, we're, we're working on, the things we haven't been able to start on, we're still struggling with, uh, like Lady Smith convenience site, you know, we're still struggling with that. Um, but most everything else is moving along, e- even in utilities for the things, uh, as well. School projects, you, a lot of those are complete, as you can see on the back page. For the calendar, we have a budget work session, was mentioned earlier at six P M. on the twenty-fifth, two weeks from tonight. Our next regular meeting is May ninth. Um, we have the business appreciation dinner at the Barnes at Mattapan Eye Springs at five-thirty on Thursday, the eighteenth. Um, our next regular meeting is the twenty-third. And I was informed tonight that at school graduation, the people have confirmed that. And I know some board members normally attend that, so would you be interested in moving that meeting someplace different? Canceling it, moving it to, to June, whatever you want to do or not do? Just thought I'd bring that up when I heard that.
The, the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-third. Twenty-third of May is school graduation.
Okay, that's our second meeting.
Our second meeting in May. But if we're going to do anything, we would need to know in case planning needs to advertise any, he's got four public hearings scheduled, so if we're going to, going to, um, move it, we, now's the time before we advertise anything, send out notices.
I, I would like to move it because I always, I like to attend that graduation.
About just a, yeah, just a different day in that week?
Wednesday to twenty-fourth.
What's the twenty-fourth conflict with? Oh, oh, my thing. How about the twenty-fifth, Thursday?
Is that the third, is that the third or the fourth?
Fourth Thursday.
Fourth Thursday, okay. Then I'm fine.
Okay, let's make it the twenty-fifth.
Everybody got that? Somebody written that down? All right, Memorial Day is the twenty-ninth, Monday, the twenty-ninth. And that's all for me. And that would be all I would have.
I would have, whatever, we're done, I got something else.
All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Cully. Closing board comments?
No, just, uh, actually, Mr. Cully.
Something else?
No, just wanted to talk about reconsidering public hearing for the tax rate. Seeing how Hanover is where they are, Spotsy and Stafford have both advertised ridiculously high. Stafford's going up three cents, I think.
Stafford was thirty cents.
Yeah, they, they, they put out thirty cents, but they're going up three.
Right, yeah, they, they, the administrator recommended eleven.
Yeah.
Then they advertised thirty, but yeah, they didn't even get to eleven.
But just to get people in the bill?
I.
Misprint?
I don't know, I just thought it was shut.
I mean, if, I, I was.
Oh, now you tell.
Critical of previous boards before I was on it, that we didn't raise taxes when it was necessary and we increased our debt. And if we are looking at taking twenty-five hundred or two-point-five million out of our, out of our general fund, school needs, other needs, firefighter needs, and we're looking at flat funded, then I think it's something that we should, we should look at. And I, I don't want to fall into that trap that we were in fifteen years ago, where we keep it low, keep it low, keep it low, and then all of a sudden, we're in trouble. And then we have to increase it, you know, whatever. That's my thoughts at this point, so.
Each penny's about three hundred and, three, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, something, three-thirty-four.
And it would require us to schedule a different meeting and, and I know it would be a pain in the rear end, but, uh, uh, looking at the budget presentation, hearing the, the speakers tonight, and just looking to see what everyone else around us is doing, I'm afraid that we're taking that first step down where we were fifteen years ago.
Well, if we hold a public hearing on the possibility of doing it, we, we get different opinions. And I, I understand what Clay's saying, although we just went up last year.
No, but, no, we didn't. No, we went down.
We went, we went down on personal property.
We didn't go up last year, was it before?
Yeah, we went up.
Or eight, we went up eight.
Yeah.
Um, but we don't need to go that high again, certainly.
Here's mine, I was going to mention, I thought we were going to have time to speak with the, with the people around, and I actually mentioned what you said. I was actually going to mention what you have said, uh, when Clay came on the board about, um, you know, we were woefully behind in funding on some of the things. I mean, it, it, it is, that's, that's, I mean, Clay's right. And, uh, you know, um, if you look at, I asked, if you saw the note that I asked for from staff, um, how much, anytime we have people come to us from our constitutional officers, whether it be the Sheriff's Department or the Treasurer or the Commonwealth Attorney, um, Fire and Rescue, you know, they will come to us and they'll say, you know, we really need this employee because we're overwhelmed and we, we don't bat an eye. We, we, we totally trust them, we, we give it to them. I don't, I don't remember a time where we've, we've grilled the Treasurer, grilled the Commissioner of Revenue or, or, or grilled, you know, um, you know, even the Fire Chief, I mean, we've agreed to give him nineteen employees. And we talk about the school's population not going up, but our population really in Caroline hasn't gone up a ton, okay? And we're adding nineteen firefighters because they're needed, because they've been needed for a while. And if you look at the numbers that, um, and I know they weren't total, but the numbers I asked for in twenty-one fifty-one K in new employees, twenty-two, three-hundred-and-fifty-nine K in new employees, this is just on the county side, twenty-three, one-point-one million, one-point-eight, one million in new employees, and twenty-four, nine-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand in new employees. That's, but.
But that, first of all, the firefighters that you're quoting, we haven't hired, the one-point-eight. The firefighters that were, other ones we're talking about are safer grant that are in there that if we don't get the safer grant, we don't get them. So you've got to back those out. We postponed, I'm going to tell you, we postponed the fire station, Mr. Thomas and Mr. Underwood would tell you that argued just for a long time, we didn't have the funds. And the call volume, and the call volume's there now. And we're, we're doing this to organic growth, you can't do this through raising taxes. I mean, I've got all kinds of texts from folks that watched the meeting tonight that are like, you, you can't raise taxes right now. I mean, we're looking at an inflation at seven, six, seven, eight, nine percent. We talked about this when we did the tax rate and we have new revenue coming on, online. When Harris Teeter is finished next year, that's going to be new revenue. The, the one-point-three million square foot warehouse.
Oh, no.
Oh, not Harris Teeter.
Well, world-class distribution.
World-class distribution. I mean, we've got new revenue coming, we just can't get in front of. But the firefighters are something that we have talked about since I've been on this board. Mr. Thomas was saying, we've moved that fire station three times.
But if we, Mr. Cully, I guess my argument is this, if, if we were to get the grant, the safer grant, at some point that grant runs out.
That's correct, that was just three years.
Yeah, yeah.
We knew we were going to inherit that.
After, after year four, what are we going to fire them all?
No.
So, I mean, at some point, that, that, that money, we're, we're, I mean.
We would have, we would have had time to work that in versus one year, but it's still been a lot easier.
I'm not saying, like, I understand why the tax rate, I, I get it, like, I mean, I know I get. Oh, I, you know, I'm, I, I, I guess I, I've heard I spend money like water. You know, and I can't be, you can't be a conservative. Cultural war with schools, I don't know why a Republican or someone who votes G O P, I don't know why they can't be pro-school. I've never understood that. And, and it's, it's just, it's, it's a, uh, but, but here, but.
It has nothing to do with.
But, but let me ask you this, though.
Has to do with economic capability. And we're, and, and we're, we're just, we're in the I ninety five court order. I did this in my constituent meeting. Spotsylvania, one cent of real estate raises one point seven million dollars.
Twenty-six schools they gotta fund.
One point seven million dollars. Stafford, two point two million out of one cent.
Jeffs, one at a time.
But, but what I'm saying is they have, like, when you go to Spotsy, yes, they raise more money, but they also have to divide that up among. How many schools are in Spotsy? Thirty, whatever it is. I mean, there's a ton of schools they have to, so that one point one million, you can say, raises a ton of money, but they're also splitting it up.
Well.
But, but here's the thing, I mean, I guess bottom line, we can discuss this at the thing, like, I understand what Clay is saying, and I'm not saying. But at some point, what they said tonight out there was very powerful. And if we weren't listening to what they were saying, what they were saying was the truth. And it's not just happening in Caroline, it's happening everywhere. Okay, I mean, they're, they're struggling, the, the one teacher said they were burnt out. Um, you know, and, and it's, I mean, I, a couple of them, one of them I taught. Uh, that was here, and then there was another one that taught with me last year that came back to Caroline. And she took a pay cut to come back to Caroline. Uh, and. You know, I, I've been on this board for, I guess, since two thousand and eleven. And we have in our budgets, all I'm saying is this, we have in our budgets. In previous years, say, we're gonna concentrate on this. We've done with fire and rescue, we're saying, we're gonna, we're gonna put, we need, we're desperate, the sheriff's office desperate. We need to help them. And, and, and all of these are true. They're all been, they're, I don't, I'm not saying none of those were a waste. We, we've had to prioritize like the sewer system. Um, we, our pipes aren't big enough. We can't grow if we don't have bigger pipes. And those are all things that we had to spend money on, and I'm not saying it's a waste of money at all. But what I am saying is, when have we ever sat down as a board and said for one year, we are gonna make the schools a number one priority? And, and I'm not talking about the referendum because the voters did that. When have we said we are going to make this our priority this year, our number one priority this year is going to be the school system? And when they come to us, we, I, I feel like, and it was mentioned tonight. When they come to us, I feel like sometimes we treat them as, oh, a constitutional officer, Mr. Bassoon can come to us and say, I need this. And we try, okay, yeah, that's great. But when they come to us, oh, it's, it's like, they can't possibly, the numbers can't possibly be right. And I, and I think we need to sit down as a board and those are, those are your teachers, your, your kids in your school system. And I think we really need to sit down as a board and really look at the funding that we're doing. Because those teachers tonight weren't lying. So that's it. Thank you.
There's, there's, there's another option, and I understand what you're saying. Um, I'm not gonna vote for a tax increase, whether we have another add or not. Because I think our regular citizens are feeling the effects of, of inflation, gas prices more than you realize. But maybe the county can take a bigger bite. We, we don't know because we're in the third quarter of the budget, but we don't necessarily know what our revenues are gonna end up. Maybe that one point two million that we were planning to take from the unencumbered balance, we don't. If we don't, there's one point two million, maybe we could say can be used for other priorities, whatever, for just this one time. That's a possibility too. The tax increase, you know, I really think would hurt more folks now than would help. But there are things we can do without doing that. That's just my opinion. And we'll have plenty of time to discuss it in the budget.
We do have a work session coming up and we have time to discuss.
But.
So you would like to make a, you can make a motion now to re-advertise at a higher tax rate if you would like to. And then the board will vote on that motion and it either passes or fails, and then we know where we're going from there. If that's what you'd like to do.
But I'll make a motion that we re-advertise for two cents increase.
Okay, is there a second to your motion? Okay.
Second to put on the table.
There has been a motion made by Mr. Forehand and seconded by Mr. Black. To re-advertise our tax rate. And if it passes, we'll have to work out the details.
I'll work out the detail.
Um, I think we've had enough, enough discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nay. Um, the chair, the, the tax division in the House, Mr. Forehand, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Forehand votes aye. Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Black votes aye. Mr. Sealy?
Nay.
Mr. Sealy votes nay. I vote nay. Ms, Ms. Long?
Aye.
Votes aye. Mr. Underwood?
Nay.
It's three, three, the motion fails. So we will, that's not the end of our discussion. We'll consider other ways to find additional funding or. Use additional funding if that's what the majority of the board decides. Alright, thank you, Mr. Forehand for that. Now I'll come back to you for closing board comments. Yes, sir.
Mr. Finchman informed me the planning commission has this room on the twenty fifth of May.
They can use the E O C. Is that okay?
Y'all got a public hearing?
Our technology folks commented both.
Yeah, okay, yeah, two meetings.
You got what? You'll have to be two meetings?
Yeah, yeah, everybody, video, video, I T.
Can you move your meeting?
He's gotta meet with his people to move his meeting.
You can, you, you can have your meeting on the twenty third. And we don't wanna meet the day after Memorial Day. Alright, Mr. Colley, you work that out. And you could go ahead, the board will give you permission to advertise what date you, uh, come up with after you poll the board at a later date. How's that? That was Wednesday and I had a.
Dr. Calverick, what day is the last day of school? Gotta have it before that day because I'm out.
The twenty fifth, you're out?
No.
Or after the twenty fifth?
So it was the twenty second.
Twenty, is that a Monday?
Yeah.
Monday, that's a G W R C meeting. It's the, the G R C is always the last Monday of the month.
Do we need a second meeting in May?
He said he had four.
Four public hearings at night.
No, it's the last fourth Monday. Yeah, yeah, fourth. Yeah, well, okay.
Alright, we'll do the twenty fourth and I'll, I'll just have to work around my schedule.
Twenty fourth.
What is, what is that day, though?
Wednesday.
But the meeting's gotta end by nine o'clock.
Well, that's a Finchman thing. We, we can, we'll do all weekend. Depends what they are.
No, not, it's like tonight, if there's twenty-five people for public hearings, it'll just run late. I, I have a, I have a Zoom call at nine o'clock.
Alright.
Okay, um, that takes care of that.
That did take care of that.
We're gonna go over to twenty fourth. Now we're gonna do clo- closing board comments, Mr. Forehand.
Um, I, I detected with a lot of the comments today that, uh. There is a perception that there's a lot of animosity between the boards and. Where I, I can see that. That can be interpreted that way. I don't feel that from my colleagues on the board. I, I've, uh, always thought that some of the conversations that we have to have are, are difficult. And sometimes pointed and sometimes contradictory to agendas. And I know that an observer may think that there is animosity when there is not. Um, I personally have no animosity. And I don't, I get, I, I don't suspect that my colleagues do, but again, that's, that's up to them. But, um, I think we can, uh. Reset, whatever we can reset. Um, I do have some things I wanna get off my chest at our next group meeting. And it's just, just being transparent and, you know, sharing what I'm thinking of my thoughts. I'm sure y'all have thoughtful responses to my questions and comments. Um, and then I would expect the same back from, from the school board and the, and the administration. But, uh, I, it's a little disheartening to see some of the, the, the broader. Um, characterizations of this board. When I don't feel like they're, they're warranted and, and all aspects, but, um. Moving forward, again, that, again, that's, that's all we can look to do. Um, I'm optimistic that we can, uh, come to an agreement and, um, continue to make it, you know, make this great place. This county a great place to live, work, and raise children. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Yeah, just, uh, a couple, um, I actually, you know, that, the tax rate debate over there, their brief one was actually kind of, um, somewhat, um, civil. And I appreciate that because we're gonna have different opinions and if we can keep it civil, that's a, a good thing. Because we have some neighbors to our north that that is not a possibility. And, um, it's, it's embarrassing. So, um, just a couple of other things. I, I did wanna say, um, that, um, I, I've become, uh, quite friendly with, uh, Major Nutter over the last few months. And, um, he, he said something to me about the sheriff's office that I thought really resonated with me. And, uh, I just kinda wanted to share it because I think, um, it kinda describes Caroline as a whole. And, um, he said in Caroline with the sheriff's office that, you know, it's, it's hard to compete with the Spotsies and hard to compete with the Stafford counties. Because anytime Caroline gets close, Stafford ups their pay, Caroli- I mean, Spotsylvania ups their pay and then you lose deputies. And so he said, what we have to do is we have to do the little things really well. To keep deputies, we have to do the little things really well. And, um, I think that's also Dr. Calverick, something the schools have to really concentrate on because, yes, we need to up your salaries. There's one hundred percent. We need to up your salaries and I'm, I'm with you there, but Caroline schools, and you guys do an excellent job, but we have to do the little things in Caroline. Um, to, because it is gonna be hard to compete with the Spotsies and the Staffords and the Prince Williams. I mean, we just don't, we just don't have the income. I mean, our pie is just not as big as theirs and probably won't be for a very long time. Maybe someday down the road it will be. Um, but I, when I think of it, just little things outside the box, like, um, coaches, when, when, when someone wants to coach, very few teachers coach anymore. Why don't we coach anymore? Because the salary is terrible. And if you're a first-year coach or a third-year coach, you get the same pay. And, uh, so like little things like that start paying coaches better or, um, teachers that get their master's degree. I heard, uh, a teacher today say, um, when she had, the teacher was talking about food, um, you know, uh. Offer more for master's degree than surrounding counties. I mean, that would not be huge expenses. Um, I don't think in your budget that, hey, like in, in Caroline, you get ten percent or twelve percent for a master's, whereas in Spotsylvania, you're only getting seven percent. Uh, little things like that, I think that we can work with the school system to, um, to also help out. So we do need to work on teacher salaries one hundred percent, but the little things are also very, very, very important as well. So thank you.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Long?
Uh, the only thing I'll comment on is, uh, going back to, to a point of sometimes people feel like the two boards aren't working. Uh, are communicating. Well, that does happen. It happens in families, it happens on boards. But I think what people see is a difference in mission. The school board has a mission. They have the kids, they have the education, they have their staff to take care of. We have everyone who's part of the county, including our seniors and our singles and our non-children couples. And our staff to take care of. So we're all protective of our own families and sometimes that gets misinterpreted. So I think we just have to learn to, uh. To communicate better as a couple. With two different, uh, uh, priorities until we come to a solution and continue with, with making the partnership work. Uh, to the best of our ability. So I think that's what you're seeing sometimes, just we each have our own main concerns. So, and I thank everyone for their patience and everyone for their comments tonight and staff for staying here so late.
Mr. Underwood? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I listened to all the speakers this evening. And I wrote a question down that. I said, why would the board of supervisors want schools to fail? And that's what you heard today is. That you won't fund schools because you want them to fail. Mr. Sealy's been here for fifty years. Mr. Thomas has been here for fifty years. I've lived in the county for fifty years. Nancy's been here for forty years. Mr. Black probably for twenty years, I'm suppo- I'm guessing. Mr. Forehand? Why would we want a school system to fail where we live? I coached, I taught at the high school. The winningest coach in Caroline basketball history sits here. I'm talking to you. Why would I want schools to fail? We don't want schools to fail. I don't want schools to fail. But you can't be two-faced. And tell schools one thing and say something else to this board or your constituents. You've got to tell the truth. And there are some hard truths. Dr. Calverick is the school board leader. As a school leader, I think she does an excellent job. But I don't always agree. And I'm not going to go along just to go along. That's, anybody who knows me knows that's not my personnel. I'm gonna question. I'm gonna be your biggest supporter, but I'm gonna be the person that questions. Because that's what I do. I question. And when people ask me questions, I'm gonna have an, I'm not gonna be two-faced. I'm not gonna say one thing when I'm in one group and I'm not gonna say something when I'm in another. I'm not gonna hide behind, uh, email or Twitter or Facebook. Like some of you do. I'm not doing that. I'm gonna tell you to your face, I think you're wrong. Do teachers need more pay? Yes. Do I think we're administratively heavy? Yes. Do I think there's a way we can pay teachers more money creatively? Yes. But it's gonna take creativity, it's gonna take leadership, and it's gonna take some hard. Hard lessons. I don't back down. People say, give respect, you earn respect. And when you lie and you're two-faced, you don't earn respect. You don't get my respect. Ever. Or make that clear, you don't get my respect. Now, we can agree to disagree and we can have heated debates. Floyd and I have had some of the heated debates. God knows. But I love him like a brother. And by giving him a hard time, I still give him a hard time. And Floyd will tell you, I have no animosity. But when I think I'm right, you gotta prove me wrong. When I was taking debate years ago. The person who debates the best can prove their point, wins the point. Caroline County is not going to ever pay what Spotsylvania pays. The taxpayers. Who are here are not going to allow us to do that, but. As business grows, the revenue grows. That's when we are better. And we're getting better. But it's not tomorrow. I think we can be creative. I think there's some things we can do, but it takes two to tangle. So make no mistake about it, I speak directly. I don't speak in side language. I tell you, if I disagree with you, I tell you, I disagree. I think we can improve. I think schools can improve. Think we can do a better job? I think you can do a better job. But that's growth. That's growth, people. I'm not gonna like everything you do and you shouldn't like everything we do. Because we all have an opinion. I'm willing to work with anyone, but I'm not gonna settle for anything. Or make that clear. Perfectly clear. I'm not going to do that. The message that this board sends out. And the tax rate and how we handle money when there's an election should be the same way you handle money when there's not an election. We shouldn't say, oh, let's wait till next year because there's no election and we can raise taxes. That's not how you do it. You raise based on need, whenever there's need. And some of us need to figure that out. And speak truth rather than two-faced lies, depending on which group you're with. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm done.
Thank you. Um, my only comment was gonna be that the, the habitat groundbreaking is at eleven. Eleven on the twenty-first of April at, at, at Travis and his brothers. But, um, we've had a lot of comments. I guess I didn't ask before, what was the A, A D M for March thirty first? Was it higher? It's not reported yet. Oh, I thought you guys reported. Okay. One of the things, and I, I don't know if people know, but we don't. Well, speaking from the board of supervisors' side. We don't publicize things enough. And, and that's our fault and that's something we need to do better. But at our joint meeting, um, I believe, Dr. Calverick, you said if the A D M were a certain number. There would be five hundred and some thousand dollars that you could give. there would be five hundred and some thousand dollars that you could give for raises for this year. Right? Right. But, but that's something that I think, I don't know if all those people that spoke knew that. Okay. Right, you are, and, and, and we are not, which is, which is very true. But the, the, the point is that we should have been able to say that should the ADM be what you projected it to be, there would have been additional raises or a bonus that you were gonna give people in June.
Wanna make sure.
Okay.
Call information out to public. We are solely focused on the year of sixteen improvement salaries, which is a perfect.
That's, that's really the, the, the point that, that we need to get out. There was something that could happen for people this year. And, and that's really what, what we all want to have happen. And that's kinda when you and I were talking, I wanted to get us to say we agree on some things. And that's the start of maybe what Clay was talking about, of perception. And perception is, is really an issue for, for both of us, because the process itself is an adversarial process. You, you come out with your budget. It's before we know how much money we have, and then the two are never even close. So we, we have this battle back and forth. And honestly, we are trying to do the best we can. And I think that's the, that's the thing that, that everybody has to realize. I'm gonna look for ways to do some other things, and I think we all are. That's what our job is. Some of us are gonna say, I think that's not it. But we, as a group, the board of supervisors, will work through it on, on the budget. And like I said, we're gonna try to do the best we can. I think that's the reality. And, and that's the, the truth that you can go back with is we may not get there today, but, you know, I've worked on a couple of businesses that are coming that are really good businesses, that are gonna provide a lot of revenue for the county. There's gonna be opportunity for a lot of things. So we're gonna continue to try and work together, and I think that's the bottom line. I'm trying to get everybody to understand. I appreciate all that the, the school folks have done. I see Dr. Rollins Fels is still here. She's the last school board member. But we, we talk on a regular basis, so we're trying to work together. And, and that's the thing we're gonna keep doing. That's, that's really the reality. You know, there's no animosity. Reggie mentioned the same thing. I think the good point to, you know, to really understand is, I was right when I was talking to Reggie. So as long as we all understand that, we're all good. But we needed that levity to go home with, so that's the end of the meeting. Motion to adjourn is in order.
No move.
Oh, w, wait, why are we recessing till the twenty-fifth? Oh, I, I thought.
I thought it was advertised.
Yeah, though we advertised. We didn't advertise.
So we need to recess till the twenty-fifth.
We gotta reopen and recess till the twenty-fifth is the motion.
At the, at the EOC at six o'clock.
Recess to the community center somewhere.
Community Services Building at six o'clock. Second.
All right. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Recess.